Good evening councillors and members of the public, and welcome to the Sandwich Town Council Meeting of the Ordinary Council on Monday the 25th of March 2024. Item number one is Chair's opening comments. And the first thing I wanted to say, there is a volunteer charity evening tomorrow, and there seems to be a bit of confusion, but the councillors are more than welcome to come along to the volunteer evening.
Is that in the jury room then?
Oh, in the jury room at, I think it's 7pm. 6.30pm. 6.30pm. Apart from that, will I start it right? So, but if an individual email hasn't gone out, all STC councillors are welcome to come along and support the volunteers from the town. So that's item number one, thank you very much. Item number two is, we had a very, I believe the, I believe I was there, the weekend, we had a very successful three-day market, and despite bad weather, we had some very good feedback from it, and I believe several of the storeholders wish to rebook in future, which is really good. But I wanted to make this publicly clear, that this market is selling items that are not sold at the farmer's market on a Thursday, so we're not trying to replicate anything that we're already doing. And the other matter is, is the income for it is going to pay off the public works loan. So the money from these markets, whether they're from another company or something else, will pay off the public work loan. So, and that is really important, we really need that. I also wanted to congratulate all those that came along. We had a very successful Keep Britain Tidy litter pick, which we started on the Guildhall Four Court here, and we had a number of councillors, and we had some very nice, it's very nice to see some young children attending as well. And we had a two-hour litter pick, and then we've got another one this Thursday down on the quay from two o'clock to four o'clock, if you're able to make that as well. Also wanted to thank, Michael Pass, councillor Murray here, but the community, what's your group called, sorry?
The DDC Caretakers.
The DDC Community Caretakers, who also attended and also helped out on that. So thank you very much for that, councillor Murray. Also, I wanted to note, thanks to the Finance and Assets Group, who have visited another one of our own, the town council's assets, which was Popeye's Hill Chapel, and I'm hoping that there'll be a report on that later on. And then I had, the last item I had was to do with councillors constituency work. And just as a bit of a guideline to any sort of new councillors that don't know, but when residents approach you with issues or concerns, it's your duty as a councillor to look into those issues or concerns, try and research them, and then if you do need help or advice, to come to the town clerk. So obviously the town clerk is exceptionally busy, and so we can't expect the town clerk to do all our constituency work, but we can ask her for advice or help. I hope that's, I hope that's clear, so, thank you very much. Item number two is apologies for absence received.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, we have apologies from councillor Nick Gray, who's got a travel commitment, councillor Peter Brinhe has a personal commitment, and Peter Gill, the community whip, sends his apologies.
Thank you very much for those, town clerk. Item number three is declarations of interest, and this is to receive any declarations of disposable funeral interest from members in respect of business to be transacted on the agenda tonight. Do we have any declarations of interest? Or this is for the Sandwich Town Council again, Rowan. That's a meal return, thank you very much. Item number four is minutes of the full council meetings and committees. And the first one is to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of Sandwich Town Council held on the 26th of February 2024, and to consider any matters arising from those minutes not covered elsewhere in this agenda. This is attachment one A, if you would have this one. Councillor Morehouse, can you please stand and speak?
Royal attention please to item STC 022422. The Weekend Market Involvement. At the last meeting, there were fourteen councillors present, and twelve of us voted in favour of this market proceeding, and there were two abstentions, nobody voting against. On Sunday the 7th of March, I noticed a comment made by councillor Murray on the Sandwich Town Facebook page stating, absolutely disgusting prices for a pig for a food bag, and they don't even use local businesses for a price. Well done to Sandwich Matters Majority for taking even more money out of our local place. The literal nature of the post led me to respond somewhat pithily, by suggesting that councillor Murray's comment was a total tenement. Putting the Facebook word of words so on side, my issue is that after agreeing to proceed with this event democratically via majority vote, we as a council should not tolerate one of our own councillors attempting to undermine an event that an overwhelming majority was present in this table on Monday the 26th of February, felt was necessary as a source of income to meet the cost of the Guildhall Four Court reversion. If we as a council choose to brush this issue on with a gavel, we'd be making a rod for our own backs. A subsequent comment from councillor Murray paints a picture that suggests that this council needs to be held to account for the disasters that Sandwich Matters Majority caused. He also suggests that we're persecuting charities, are anti-community events, and anti-business. In a further fit of pique, I was reminded that my brother-in-law and colleagues and I voted to charge events for using Guildhall Four Court, and voted for Zoom events to be able to make use of the space this weekend. We can't allow the council of this council to face with a tirade of insults and unfounded accusations of persecution every time we democratically vote for a decision. The councillor Murray deserves it. I think I said as much as I want to, thank you.
Is it directly?
Yes, this is a flag. Mr Mayor, if my comments stand, and they were made standard, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Did we have any other comments on the quarterly meeting from the 26th of February at all? Fair pretty clear, thank you very much, and do I have a second up? Hold on. Councillor Tuchel, the couple, councillor Tuchel. And all those in favour, please signify with your cards. And the next item is to receive the minutes of the planning meeting held on the 7th of February 2024, and this is attachment one B. Do we have any comments or concerns over the planning minutes at all? If not, could I have a proposal second up? Councillor Tuchel. And all those in favour, please show. Thank you very much, and those are passed. Next is to receive the minutes of the Heritage and Townscape Committee meeting, held on the 8th of January 2024, and this is attachment one C. Councillor Anderson, would you like to?
These minutes should not have been brought because we did not agree the minutes at the last meeting of the Heritage and Townscape Committee. We voted for them to be deferred to the next meeting of the Heritage and Townscape Committee, so they shouldn't. So I think that's, everyone's agreed, they're deferred.
You voted to that, yeah?
Yes, really, we did.
Thank you very much. All those in favour of deferring the minutes of Heritage and Townscape meeting to the next full council meeting, please show.
To the next Heritage and Townscape meeting?
Yes.
Not the full council meeting, it's Heritage and Townscape.
They've been deferred.
The Heritage and Townscape, Heritage and Townscape will look at them.
Before?
At the 8th or the 11th meeting, Heritage and Townscape, yeah.
All those in favour of these minutes being deferred until the next Heritage and Townscape meeting, would you please show now? Thank you very much. To receive the minutes of the Finance and General Purposes Committee meeting held on the 19th of February 2024, and this is item one, attachment one D. Do we have any comments or queries for us at all? If we don't, could I have a proposal second up for these? Councillor Wiles. Do we have a second up for them? Councillor Franklin, thank you. And all those in favour, please show. Thank you very much, councillors. And then item number five is payment schedules. Five A is to receive the note payments for the mid-March token £29,515.77. Those payments which are not supported by a minute preference have been authorised by officers with delegated powers of expenditure. That's item two A. And then item two B is to receive and approve the scheduled payments for March, token £35,035.77, and that is attachment two B. And do we have any questions or queries on items five A or five B? Could I have a proposal second up for these? For those, councillor Tuchel. Could I have a second up, councillor Tuchel? That's a pen, so, thank you very much. All those in favour of these two documents, please show. Thank you very much, that's passed. And item five C, councils confirm nomination of two signatories to authorise end of March payment schedules on bank line. And item five D is councils confirm nomination of two signatories to authorise the mid-April 2024 payment schedules on bank line.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, yeah, can I just add that the authorisation will need to be done by 12 noon on Wednesday this week, because we need to act, and obviously we've got the two bank holidays. So whoever agrees to authorise it, they will need to do it by 12 noon on Wednesday, please.
Do we have any nominations at all? Do that, are they all set up? So we've got councillor Franklin and councillor Wiles. And that is, are you able to do both of those? Are you able to?
They're set up, I do it.
Yeah, actually.
They're set up.
Yeah, they're all set up, and councillor Wiles is set up.
Yeah.
I'm matching lingers, so I can't put myself forward. So all those in favour of councillor Wiles and councillor Franklin being the signatories, please, please show. Thank you very much, that's passed. And item number six is public participation, and this is a twenty-minute session. It's set aside for members of the public to make representations at the meeting in respect of the business on the agenda and other matters if time permits. Individual representation should not exceed five minutes. Written notice of the desire to exercise the right to speak together with the topic to be addressed must be given to the town clerk prior to noon of the day of the meeting. Do we have any?
So Mr Mayor's bitten at the best.
Absolutely. Could I ask Mr Morris Bitten to come to speak? Would we, um, dear, to come and stand up here? Is that okay? We need you to just come a little bit further and turn around, and you need to address the council of your, of your subject, and you have five minutes, you should brush it. Please do not use any good words or personal comments about this.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity of letting me speak this evening. It's, before I say anything else, I just want to say that the 40s, Sandwich Salute the 40s Festival, which I'm very much in favour of, because I think it's a wonderful thing, it attracts a lot of people to attend, and we enjoy it, but there are some participants dressed in Nazi uniforms, which I find personally very distressing, and when I saw it last year, I was, I wasn't going to say nothing, I walked off with my dog, but I thought, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stay silent, I really don't speak to this chap. And I asked him if he didn't understand how offensive the uniform he's wearing could be to some people, but I got very short shrift from him. I looked out the organiser, Mr Malik, whom I went and spoke to, and actually, you know, it's a historic event, although maybe historic, but certainly nothing to do with sandwich. And it, you know, the fact that, I read some of the things that had been said, and one of the conditions apparently is that they agree, Mr Malik agrees, that there should be no Gestapo or SS uniforms. Well, personally, I don't see the difference, you know, I see a Nazi officer, a chap, with jab boots and a whip, and it's highly displaceful. I've spoken to a lot of people in Sandwich, neighbours and friends, and everyone feels the same way. And I just think that, I don't, I certainly don't want the event to be, to interfere with the event, but I think there should be a provider, that there should be no Nazi representation.
Thank you very much. And before you depart, it's, I believe it's our duty to actually say what we can actually take to help you with this, and I was just wondering, councillor Malik, would you be able to, as the organiser, would you be able to unpack this stuff, listen to, perhaps explain things further?
I can, again, we've spoken on a number of occasions, and the emphasis I've made is we have a particular rule, that no political statements, no political emblems or anything of that nature unless it is forced on the uniform. And there was, and that was adhered to. There were no Gestapo, there were no SS, there was no whip. The gentleman in question, he is an eighty-year-old, he is very particular to having the correct Wehrmacht uniform, it is not a Nazi uniform, only in the sense it is German, and the Nazi Party is in charge of that term. And his comments to me was, he was abused by Mr Bitten, and this went on for some time, and after putting up with it for some time, eventually he said, it's off. And that was it.
I actually stopped this here right now, and what I wanted was some sort of, perhaps outside the chamber, something to be undertaken by yourselves, the organiser, and by a disgruntled resident. So could I perhaps ask, would you, the two of you be able to correspond or, or round up to sort this out separately?
Well, frankly, the response I've just heard doesn't give me much confidence, so I don't, it's not the point, really.
Okay, then.
So I'll just not go to the festival. I'm very sorry to say that. It's a great pity, because I don't see the difference between, I mean, to say that it's not a Nazi uniform, I mean, that's, that's absolutely preposterous thing to say. You know, it is a Nazi uniform, might not be SS, but if not, councillor Murray.
Yes, can I also, I think most of you know that I'm a Georgian grandmother of German heritage, I produce, and I also saw this gentleman at the last salute of the 40s event, which, like Mr Bitten, I also think is, on the whole, a good idea. And I went and had a very close look at him, I didn't actually speak to him because I thought, I was very upset, to put it mildly, I thought, I might, you know, be rather overnatured. Anyway, I looked very carefully at his uniform, and it is a Wehrmacht uniform, it's not an SS or a Gestapo uniform, but a Wehrmacht uniform has, as part of its decoration, a belt which says Gottwehr, and swastika emblems above an eagle, and that was the standard uniform for the Wehrmacht during the fair drive. And it's not very pleasant for somebody of my hand back drive to encounter a swastika in my hometown, where on the whole I feel utterly safe. And I then went to talk to Mr Malik, as he was then, about it, in, I felt, as cruel a manner as I could, and he walked backwards, nearly to my house, because he was going in that direction anyway, and as we walked, I said to him, to Mr Malik, what really worries me is why somebody should buy that uniform, because that's what you do, that's how you access it, you buy it. In fact, I went online yesterday, and I found a whole lot of these uniforms for sale, books about them and so on, and I had a very close look at that eagle and swastika, and there was more than one swastika uniform. And Mr Malik said, to my astonishment, maybe he likes Hugo Boss designs, which I felt was not a particularly appropriate way of handling an issue which is of deep importance and deep meaning to many people in this country, and I had already expressed cruelly, I thought, with very little emotion, my own concerns about it. So what I wish to hear is some guarantee that at the next event, which I hope occurs, if anybody does turn up in that sort of uniform, with those emblems upon it, because if it's a correct uniform, that's what they will have, is simply asked to leave, because that would be, as far as I'm in peace, and I'm sure Mr Bitten, the right response, and one that I think I'm hoping many people in Sandwich will support.
Thank you for that. I must actually say, at this point, this is not a participation by councillors part of the session, and the town clerk is probably seething at being letting any councillors speak at all, but we are supposed to give the speaker a reply as to what the town council will be doing about this. So all I can suggest on the brain is that, obviously, the town council can send a letter to the organisers and ask them to curtail the use of any SS or Nazi uniforms for you. I'm afraid that's as far as we can take it. Thank you very much, we're highlighting this issue for us.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Mrs June Summer Hayes, on the White Mill Rural Heritage Centre. Would you like to?
Good evening, thank you for having me to speak. I have submitted a grant application on behalf of the White Mill. It's the first application I've ever made, so please forgive any issues or errors, and we will brief you up with questions when we discuss it. You are no doubt aware that STCOs in the mill and volunteers of these won't be tireless like for over forty years to restore it. Many alone no longer live there. We are hoping to help the mill back in working order very soon, but we need your help. Last year we received no grant funding whatsoever, and we only have a tiny income, all of which goes towards restoring the mill. We are investing £2,160 to cover the cost of the crane to reinstate the sweeps for sale. We are aware, however, that STDF have its own financial difficulties, and even half that amount would be greatly accepted. Recently, we had a problem with our accounts, and as a result, we've changed the way they are audited. This new way of working means that we will no longer be allowed to fly for local duty grants. That makes this application all more important. I can't find any reference to the mill being more different out in the past, certainly nothing in the last few years, so this is likely to be our one and only chance, and your one and only chance to help us. Reinstituting the sweeps will return the mill to its old glory, and it will make it once again the iconic part of the sandwich landscape as it should be. We will have an open day when sales be reinstated, and it will be marvellously spectacular. Please come along and enjoy it with us, and spend some money. It will be an opportunity for you to meet with the volunteers, show your appreciation for the work they have undertaken over the last forty years, and hopefully must surprise you by the fact you've helped us with this part, we made it part of the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Mrs Carol George, who wishes to speak on Sandwich in Bloom. Would you mind coming up and addressing the council, please?
Good evening, Mr Mayor, I'm Deputy Mayor of the Town Clerk and Labour Councillors. Given the wonderful support that we gain from the Sandwich Town Council, the main purpose of my address is to keep in touch with Sandwich in Bloom activities, especially as we are submitting an application for funding, which I hope we'll be able to support. We are a very small band of volunteers, eight committee members and a further eleven regular volunteers, but believe we continue to achieve a great deal, which ensures the town is a bright and happy place for residents and visitors alike, and the blooming sandwiches help me aim to support our local businesses and encourage tourism. In 2023, we managed to maintain the full offering that we have all become accustomed to, but in addition to this, we created this new garden around the bus shelter, celebrated the king's coronation with streamers and a small flower bed that surrounded the evening, and added hanging planters and even more spring bulbs to St Mary's Church grounds. Spring bulbs were also added to the base of all the white gates as you enter into the town. Thanks to the funding that DDC actually did give us, we were able to replace the broken apple crates behind the Guildhall and on the quay, and last Christmas we contributed to the lights in Sandwich Park Hazing and lighting twelve Christmas trees in St Peter's Baths, and a late Christmas tree, vouchers to twelve. vouchers to twelve users of the pantry, to help bring a little extra cheer to them and their families at Christmas time. As stated, small but dedicated group, many of them already volunteer within other organisations and will be known to you for their other good works. So I would like to mention them here tonight, as I believe they deserve a special thank you. As so often, these volunteers are unsung heroes, whose commitment helps to maintain our beautiful town. So we have Jill Griffiths, Margaret Wills, Chris Angela Day, David and Christine Silk, Ivan Waite, Richard George, John Vanderdog, Dorbetzer Phillips, Kenny Rye, Dig up Lucy Den, Jacqueline Franklin, Helen Smith, Anne Fox, Emmett Suka, and Lynn Ripley, and of course, Sarah Doyle and her fantastic team at Archers Low. Not to forget our very newest and youngest member, Frank Stone, who'll be one year off next week. When looking at the year ahead and reviewing new initiatives, we always have to consider maintenance issues. Two thousand and twenty-four is no exception, and our committee are planning several exciting ideas. A planter for pavement outside Sandwich Elementary School has been agreed. This will achieve two aims, one to stop the road in dangerous parking on the paved area, and two, to an interaction with children as they park and tend their own container. The two beds at the train station need another overhaul as to the riverside plants, because they are not very much efficient and need repair or replacement. We're hoping that D D C will be able to help with this. This being an Olympic year, we are also considering an interactive floral tribute in recognition of their efforts. I have encouraged Father Sebastian, Friar Sebastian, at St Penance, and I am hopeful that in collaboration with St Penance, we might see, in two thousand and twenty-five, the little gardens of Sandwich reemerge, because this was always a popular activity. One of our aims has always been to encourage local residents and businesses to display their own floral offering. And this year, by way of acknowledging their contribution to a blooming sandwich, we will be launching a little card scheme, which is aimed to thank those contributors with a personal letter and a small card that can be placed in their windows. While our ambition to expand our offering is always an agenda item, consideration must first be given to funding. Hoping for some financial support for local businesses, we hand delivered thirty letters to companies on the industrial estates and outskirts of the town. Unfortunately, we've only received two responses. Our sincere thanks go to mentors and girls in churches. We also continue to look for other funding opportunities. However, with average costs per annum probably reaching around six, six and a half thousand, and our desire to ensure we keep Sandwich and Bloom throughout the year, we are asking once again for your help and trust that you will favourably admire our grant application. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The answer that handed out after.
Yeah, I was just going to put one down, but I'll sort them out.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll keep that to the town.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. George. And our next speaker is Bun Cooper, with regards to the Dill Music and Arts Society. If you please, come and ask a question.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for letting me kind of talk to you tonight. You've given us a lot of support in the past, and I hope that you will again. I just wanted to say one or two things about Dill Music and Arts, which you probably may not realise. We are obviously a charity. It costs, actually, we do, we run year-round learning and participation all over the place. And that actually, our budget for that each year is a hundred thousand pounds. And we have to find that hundred thousand pounds, because we don't actually charge for many things. We do run a music centre, which we do charge a small fee. I think our fees over the year come in at like eleven thousand, so the rest has to be found. Today, we've been at Roger Manwood's and we've been at Sandwich Technical School. We're doing a big photographic competition this year. The photographs will be displayed all the way at the Liverpool Studium deal throughout the festival, so that's one thing. The next thing we do, of course, is our annual festival, which this year starts on the Fourth of July. The budget for that is a hundred and forty-one thousand pounds, of which we hope to get maybe, if we're lucky, about sixty thousand back in ticket sales. So you can imagine, again, we have to find every penny to make it work. Indeed, in Sandwich this year, we're going to be at St Penance Church with two concerts, one an accordion player, and another one we're going to do on the last Saturday of the festival. We're doing the whole of the Bach Brandenburg concertos, and we're going to do a Bach, some Bach in the, on the lovely New Open of that church. And we're also going to, because it's part of the G C S E this year, we're going to invite local schools to go, come into those concerts and pre. We've got the BBC broadcaster Tom Service talking there, Sir Nicholas Keynes, everybody. The other thing we're doing, which is the real highlight of the year, I think, this year, at St Mary's Art Centre, we're going to be doing Mozart's The Magic Blues, with a most wonderful, I saw them at Eber Castle, a wonderful group of people. Its cost is over eight thousand pounds, so we will need lots of support for that. So I hope that you'll look on our application, and just thank you very much for listening to it.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker tonight is Mr. David Silk, who is going to speak on Sandwich Salutes the Forties.
I mean, it's not, as a member of Ditty, I'm very proud of sandwich, and also sandwiches historically helping refugees and Jewish refugees. So I'm very, very aware of that. And I personally would not want to see anything at all that could upset anyone. And I think the vast majority of Dill actors would do that, the vast majority of people. Right, okay, I can ask, as a Ditty member of Sandwich Salutes the Forties, who then are being proposed on the Sandwich Pilgrimage Fund. To favour the event itself and support the town, Sandwich Salutes the Forties is a fun, safe and informative, intellectual, technology education. The reinactors are exact in their teachings and are keen to educate what might be a routine key stage one and three subject talk in schools to something more real. The challenge is that our parents, grandparents, and further back become touchable and are consuming food, both those who gave their lives, and those who remain livers and those who survive but no longer livers. This balances the more sombre remembrance of honest owners who come home. Considering the point of this bid, there is also the benefit of the town. Sandwich Salutes the Forties brought about five thousand visitors to the town in France twenty-three. This is based on a rough count during the event. Comparing events using quick counts at St Peter's, the five thousand seems realistic. The following table shows the visitors to St Peter's Church during twenty-twenty-four events. Sandwich Salutes the Forties, nearly three thousand, the weekend, two thousand six hundred. Sandwich Festival, two thousand, thirty thousand. Folk and Ale, just over one and a half thousand. And the Fifties Festival, three hundred and ninety-seven. These are people who actually went in and stayed with us. Using Dover District Council figures, a visitor represents on average fifteen pound spend. Thus, considering just three thousand recorded at St Peter's funding to Sandwich over the event, ignoring the notable impact of follow-up visits, this represents forty-five thousand pounds to the town. If we consider five thousand visitors, we estimate that they would be spending seventy-five thousand pounds in the town. Not bad for a two and a half thousand pound investment. It was noted by a visitor from D D C, Kenny Green, that during Sandwich Salutes the Forties, food and drink outlets were full to the point of not being able to get a table anywhere. This was not observed during other events. Sandwich Salutes the Forties has one single themed bar which sells approximately five pence a year, plus a fizzing nappy bag containing tea and stones. This event is unique in its support sandwich traders, not competing with the wide variety of outlets in the town, hence their being full. I should emphasise that another's quote should be written in context, which is how all events bring added visitors to Sandwich and its traders, not just the Sandwich Salutes the Forties. To assist and inform traders in the town, we've also produced and distributed an early version of our link here, which you have in front of you. Speaking to those that did open on Sunday and Monday last year, they noted they were among the best trading days of the year. Further to the bit, two and a half thousand, this year in particular, with the delaying grant funding, we have had to commit to running down our funds to the point of not being able to propose an event in twenty twenty-five, which if you remember, would be the eightieth anniversary of the event. Being able to plan ahead and book apps of events for around twenty twenty-five, around the same dates, would be vital to pass on funds from year to year. With the importance of celebrating New Day, eightieth year, and what follows, we'd also propose far more within the town. Working towards the event is far greater than trying to bring volunteers to manage. The possibility of Sandwich Town Council partnering, or either leading with a working group, might be appropriate. Celebrating more than just wartime needs, certainly the impact and the role of Sandwich, the creation of the M H S, and much more that can be saluted down to the forties, hopefully with an additional and early commitment funding. In the meantime, we like to retain our position as the go-to town within the district for saluting the greatest generation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That, Mrs. Silk. And that concludes our public participation, item six. And we move on to item number seven, which is a verbal report from our Dover District councillors on matters relating entirely to Sandwich. Our councillors, Morehassan, if you please, address the council with any updates you have.
Thank you, Miss Morehassan. I'm aware I'm on a journey, so how long have I got? Can you save three minutes? But I sent it to the four D D C meeting on Wednesday, the sixth of March. The agenda wasn't for the meeting of the proposed budget, which was before twenty-five. And along with the majority of councillors, all political persuasions, I voted in agreement with corporate planning November last year. I reasoned that for doing so was in order to support the electorate, because the majority voted to change in May last year. But some of our battles mean, therefore, that the one particular party voted against the budget. It's a bit like agreeing to buy a house and then refusing the mortgage to buy. Even though there are aspects of the budget I do not agree with, such as increasing council tax and parking charges, the procedure upon which the budget is voted upon does not facilitate the opportunity to vote against the passing budget. Councillors either vote for it or it's in its entirety, or they vote against it. On subjects of council tax, two point eight percent increase is identical to that with the Conservative administration we prevented a year ago. I find the decision to increase charges in the town centre far past my twenty pence per hour difficult to comprehend, considering the state of our economy and how smaller independent businesses, such as those we have in Sandwich, struggle as potential customers make their way to free parking facilities out of town resale parks. It should be remembered that in twenty twenty-two, the previous administration increased parking charges by thirty pence per hour. Clearly, the Shadow Cabinet of D D C cannot claim any moral power when it comes to increasing the cost of living. The D D C increments pay us in significant significance when compared to our police crime commission. It's increased its allocation of council tax by five point three percent. In monetary terms, it costs a significant amount to council taxpayers, more than Dover District Council tax, Dover District Council. As a balance sheet owner, my contribution to D D C is amounts to one nine hundred and ninety pound fifty-six per annum, whereas my contribution to the police and crime commission totals two hundred and twenty-seven pound sixty-nine per annum. I'll go on to mention items of local concern what I'm dealing with at the moment. Firstly, is flats in St Bach's Road, where a ninety-two-year-old was recently released from hospital. He's not totally confined, but to a wheelchair, but has significant mobility issues. There are no ramps in the outer front, there are no automatic doors. The painting of glass in the front of the box is the nineteen sixty-five version, and when the house was built. So building rates these days stay at below eight hundred mil, above grand over, that's through tough and safety glass. Secondly, I'm dealing with issues of want-to-be-placed, where the trees that were planted as part of the planning agreement have not been maintained. And secondly, there are a small number of residents using legacies and black lines to access St Bach's Road. Thirdly, I received a letter from my N P about parking in Hazelwood Meadow, which I'm dealing with at the moment. There is the call for applications to twelve Britannia Terrace and the sixth and Peter Street, which I understand I've gone to the George for planning committee. On the latter, it was noted that there was a previous application put in that planning committee, S T C, rejected or recommended refusal, but D D C approved it. But I don't believe that we were told that that application had been approved. And lastly, members of the planning committee may remember residents of ninety-five St George's Road, making representation here about their planning development, or a large four bedroom house adjacent to their house, which was going to strip away a significant amount of ancient woodland and part of the nature corridor that exists throughout the centre of the town. I was pleased to speak at the planning committee on the fourteenth of March and supported their rejection, and I'm pleased to say that the application was thrown out. I've got plenty of other things to talk about, but I think, perhaps given the agenda we've got tonight, maybe improvements by this simplicity more reasonable. Thank you very much for that, councillor Morehassan. I'm sure the town clerk would welcome a written report that we can then circulate to the councillors. All these matters are really important, and I'm sure we're pleased to. One other permanent issue is King Street. And I'm afraid I cannot report on King Street, because not a councillor has found himself a single point of contact, and he should be here tonight updating you on King Street. And the fact he's not there is a gross hell exchange, which is my opinion.
Item number eight, it was the verbal report from our Kent County councillor, Matt Dredge, electing to Sandwich. Our councillor, Chandler, would you like to talk? Trussell Council, please, thank you very much.
Mr. May, good evening, council. Our two will be reasonably brief, and you provide a more complex report in due course. I will just say, before I start, that listening to the speakers, the public speakers earlier on, it strikes me how very fortunate it's hard for this town to have so many activities, but also so many volunteers who contribute to those. And they're obviously all requesting funding in terms of why I have funded many of them through my member's grant. Badly budgeted in what they are these days, my member's grant is seeking to completely reduce, and I'm not able to do that with the freedom that I once had, but there are still a little bit to have, but not until May, because of the lipstick we have around elections this year. There is always crowdfunding cases, of course, crowdfunding platform. If anybody is interested in exploring that, then it is another opportunity to draw as funds. I just wanted to briefly mention the items that we have out of consultation at the moment, which I'm sure many of the residents in town would be interested in. So we have focus on early years. On early years education. So we have focus on early years, on early years education, supporting settings to embed in use of practice, and on parental mental health and parent infant strategy, and one on a five-year infant feeding strategy, all of which may well be of interest to families who have young children or those who might work in those sectors. We also have consultation around adult social care charging, which is around changes we're making to social care charging, around including higher level disability benefits and financial assessments and self-funding arrangements. And again, there may be several residents for whom that is applicable. All of those can be found on the next talk section of the Kent County Council website. Very briefly, there has been a lot of conversation, and I'm sure it will continue, about the state of our roads and our potholes, the additional funding that came from government, which has been applied to what we now call the pothole grid. The spending has started this March, additional contractors are being engaged or have been engaged, and that will hopefully continue through better weather through the summer to remedy all the problems that we have on our local roads. I'm not saying all of them, because we all know roads are backlogged, which is impossible to overcome at this point, but we are doing our best. The government have also given us certainty of funding, not enough, but certainty of funding over a number of years, which allows us to invest in equipment, which will make roads and roads more cost-effective, but also. And finally, I just wanted to mention that councillors may have heard both the leader of KCC and Neil Baker having been in highways talking about the potential delays when the new electronic entry system comes into place, currently scheduled for this October, which means that anybody crossing to Europe for the first time will have to enter biometric data. Actually, at the thought of that as their first journey, the comment made to me was that you might be better to fly on your first journey to Europe because the airports are geared up for it. But there are considerable problems with this, and we are doing two things. One, we are alerting government to the problems that already exist, because the county board is not, cannot easily facilitate this currently. And the strategic resilience team are working with DFT on the impact that it may have on the local roads, and that work is ongoing. And I know that that does impact our local roads here around Sandwich, or it can do, when the delays around local roads such that traffic dilverts, whichever way it takes is going to be more effective. And finally, sorry, there is a finally, King Street. That's a Morehouse referred to King Street. Absolutely, when requested, I am accessing KCC highways officers to try and both obtain information, but also assist in any way to both alleviate the pressures on the home owner who is desperately trying to get their property repaired, but also businesses in need to be knocked out as they are affected. And I'm doing that, given the context that you described.
Thank you very much for that. Are you prepared to take questions, councillor John? Councillor Chukka?
Couple of observations. Firstly, on road affairs, should we pass back to highways officers that are not perfect, but they pretty well do respond really well, aren't quite active in terms of reporting items, and sometimes it's very impressive, done with a matter of days? So always good to give praise back as well as complain. King Street, an observation, not question. It would be much better if we'd done this properly and collectively. That's my observation. You will have your own observations. There are things, we are four weeks down the track. That street has had, has not really had enough attention from us collectively as councillors. We could have done it better. It's an observation from my perspective. And then a question. At January's STC, I flagged up that there was a resident who wanted to have a meeting facilitated with Toby Butler. I followed that up with email to you. Still did the resident off the back of that, not heard anything at all. So we'd really be pleased if you could have an update today. If not, I want to follow, would be appreciated.
Indeed, please do, councillor John.
In terms of King Street, I'm understanding with you, and perhaps in future, we might find a better way. The businesses in King Street are quite determined in their approach to this, is perhaps the best way of putting that. Toby Butler, yes, he reminds me that I have approached him a couple of times in highways and other places.
Thank you very much for that. Oh, would you be able to take one last question?
Absolutely. I was just wondering if you could give us an update on the situation with bus stop and traffic going to the cattle market.
Regrettably, I can't, not because I'm on leave, but because it is a DBC issue, as far as I am aware, and I haven't heard the DBC have approached Kent Highways on this particular issue. However, if somebody would like to tell me how Kent Highways are currently not responding, then I'm happy to help out.
Sure, thank you for that. Are you prepared for one more question?
I think she tends to tell me about Kent Highways.
So I should go to tell you that Kent Highways sent to the council a document about reorganising the yellow lines and so on, in what they call new street, but what they actually meant was the cattle market. And three councillors themselves, councillor Black and councillor Oatley, wrote allegedly a report to KCC, and their response was discussed at, I think, the last town council meeting, or we had an extraordinary council meeting, and all of it discussed their response, and found it completely inadequate. They had asked us if we wished to withdraw our thoughts about their reorganization, and we decided, I think unanimously, not to withdraw, so they were, I presume, sent back, I promise. I noticed that there are now two extra little bits of double line on the pavements along the cattle market on the carpenter's side, and I suspect that's all that they're going to do. And one of the issues that we raised at extraordinary meeting was that KCC Sip Highway seemed to think that if they paint extra double lines or put yellow flashes of paint on the pavement, that somehow or other this will prevent people from parking there. Well, it certainly doesn't. I myself was caught up in a jam quite recently because people were parked on a stop. And we did say that KCC needs to talk to DBC because DBC enforces parking regulations, and we've no idea what's going on. Meantime, buses park on the corner and people get, take serious risks crossing the road.
Okay, so the two yellow lines that you're describing, so there was a plant circulation of which was out of consultation, which was, which consulted, as it has to, on the changes to parking regulations. The two short yellow lines you're describing, which go across the pavement, are actually recognising legal markings which determine that it is a non-parking, non-stopping zone for anybody. So that includes those who are normally able to stop on double yellow lines, such as stable drivers delivering. That is the limitation that is recognised for that. No, I accept that point, and I'm sure that your district councillor colleagues, both of them in fact, would be able to take up this issue with Dover District Council parking because actually enforcement of that should be done in line with the legal definition of that particular parking description. So that is what it's intended for. My view originally, my personal view originally, which is not a professional highness one, was that people would be far more likely to recognise the bed line that is utilised, and I was advised that that is only utilised in London and we can consider it. But that's the same, you know, that is the purpose of it, and I'm sure that we can shift to district councillor colleagues and age district councillors, to use the public.
Super. Thank you very much for that, councillor Chandler. And item number nine is report from local police representatives and community wardens for Sandwich, and this is to receive reports from local police representative or community warden, Peter Gill, if possible. We know Peter Gill has given his apologies. I believe we've got PC Lauren, Erin Jackson. Would you like to come up and address the council, please? Are you okay being clear? Yes, please, if you could address the council.
Hello, everybody. And I just wanted to sort of go over the last few months, not just March, and so just provide you with some statistics of calls coming in as well, some crimes coming in. So for January, if I go back a couple of months now, so in January, we had a total of 43 crime reports that have been recorded, and of those, 32 were victim-based, so they relate to things where they, a victim or person has been a victim of a crime, and 11 of those relate to crimes against society, so drug offenses and things like that. So and then in the next month, or February, there was 30 reported crimes in total, and again, 25 of those were victim-based, and five were against society. Unfortunately, the database that I get that information from, it hasn't got a breakdown to March, but with that in mind, the total, I am able to get the total number of crimes, which is 45 for this month so far, so I'm not yet reached the end of the month just yet there. So on the whole, it's sort of averaging around between 40 and 50 each month. So if you compare that to my counterparts that are working in Durdo Town Centre, they have a stream, a large amount of that, more than during the county for Sandwich. But in terms of calls that come in, so call month in January, so there was 126 calls in January to the Sandwich district, and 25 of those were immediate calls. In February, 121 calls in total, with 27 medias, and in March, so for this month, we've had 112 calls in total, with 34 of those being immediate calls. And I know I'm sort of short on time, so I won't go over my previous newsletters that I printed out to sort of go through in case you haven't had a copy of those. But for this month, the activities that I have been involved in, so from February the 28th until the March the 10th, there was an initiative that we were actioning, targeting mobile phone use whilst people were driving. During that timeframe, I worked quite closely with PC Boulder, I don't know if you've seen me walking around with it, but he also, he sort of covers the rural villages and we overlap quite a lot, and so we work together. Sorry, that's the date on my phone. So we work quite closely together. And between the two of us, over that timeframe, we issued 18 calls in total, and so we issued them for, it wasn't just mobile phones, because as you can imagine, once we stop with it before that happens, then it can sometimes lead to other things. So it resulted in it being issued for mobile phone use, defective tyres, speeding, no insurance, and also some parking offences where the cars and vehicles are. We did get, yeah, I think we did quite well in that time, but our activities that we've got going on as well, so we did put a lot of time to that. At the end of this week is Spiking Awareness Week, so I've been attending some of the local public houses and just giving them new packs of posters that they can hand out and put up in their toilets and just on the walls for people to be aware of, to raise awareness for spiking and making sure that people are aware of that. I'm not saying that that isn't an issue, we just don't tend to worry about that, but it's just raising awareness so that people can be careful, more knowledgeable, how is it, so better to be aware of it and conscious of it and keep yourself from it. And then also drink driving as well, there were a lot of persons in there just to remind people of the consequences if they were to decide to have a drink and then drive, and they're driving with the legal. I don't know whether if we brought any of your attention, but there is an ongoing issue with antisocial behaviour, where youths are using the train network, travelling into Sandwich and causing some disruption. On my previous newsletter from February, I explained about a day of action that we had, we did a multi, sorry, a joint partnership working with colleagues from Margate and also with BTP, and we basically targeted the people that we thought were causing the problem, and that was the result, and we're not with that, and there is going to be another initiative going forward that's going to be planned. But other things that we've been doing is the local schools officer, USPC Roderick, he has very good working relationships with the schools, and he has been doing engagement sessions with them, and there has been some AVAs, so behavioural agreements with children that are under 16, and they've actually goes with parents as well, so they're aware of them, and also a community catch and notices issue, which we are able to enforce, and the person that's been issued that has been arrested as a result of not complying with those conditions, and the name of the task force. So they work within the community unit alongside us, they're in our department, we have very close working relationship with them. They've also been patrolling Sandwich, they did some of them where they were over here quite a lot, and they were actually using the train network to travel around as well to try and sort of intercept the people that are causing the problem. But this weekend, they decided not to come over here, unfortunately, so there has been a lot of stop searches, arrests and engagements. So if you do have any residents that are coming to be worried for these issues, we are looking at it, we are aware of it, and we are trying our best to try and educate and prevent as well any further incidents. That is everything.
Thank you very much for that report. Can I suggest then, trouble is we're a bit time on time, I suggest that any questions are sent to the town car and then forwarded to our police officer, please, if that sounds reasonable. Is that okay?
Of course it is.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for your report this evening. Okay, item number 10, these updates from councillors, and this is to receive note verbal updates from councillors on meetings that they've attended as non-native representatives of the council. Do we have any updates from the councillors? Oh, councillor Black.
Yes, I've been to both Worth and Woodford Parish councils about if there's any interest in community bus service. One was interested, one was not. And we've also had two more sessions through the network where that level crosses A2 South and the library.
Thank you very much, councillor Black. Councillor Murray?
Yes, great to meet you, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I attended the Dover District Network Watch community meeting last Wednesday in New Street. Just to point out that there's been a few, if anyone has them in their homes and around rural areas, hitting oil drums, there's been lots of obstacles that can take place from there, so there's been an outcry to make sure that people check them, to make sure they're safe and secure. Also, there will be new Network Watch signs going around the town for Sam, because if anyone would like them in their town, in their roads, please send an email. We're also looking for coordinators for their roads, so any roads in the town, that they were, for that coordinator, for the Network Watch, then please again email me and pass them to the commissioner for review.
Thank you very much, councillor Murray. I have councillor Chu connects, and then councillor Ripley, so I can...
Just two activities to report on. First of all, I attended a start-up meeting with BBC officers from parks and open spaces on the key play park. Really good to see that they want to collaborate with Sandwich Town Council and very positive plans looking forward in terms of this project. So just a very brief summary of the high-level milestones which are indicative at the moment and dependent on all the funding being secured. But at the moment, it's looking that there will be a consultation during May of this year. This will include an online and physical survey, engagement with schools, and one or two days down at the park itself. Then tenders will be invited during June and July, and a reward made in September to October. The aim is to start construction in spring of next year, with completion of the project estimated to be March next year. I'll keep the town council updated on the project progress. There will be a couple of pre-meetings arranged with the town clerk at key points of the life cycle of the project. And that's what we are at the moment with that particular project, but at least we've now got a date that we're focused on in terms of delivering this as an outcome. The second thing I was just going to mention is that in background since the start of this year, I've been pursuing a return to Sandwich of activities and services as provided by Dover Deal and Sandwich Children's Centres. Right, and realised that they've put a lot of information out on Facebook, and they've got Sandwich in their title, but they haven't been to Sandwich since pre-COVID. So I made contact with KCC officers, sorry, the KCC individuals who run this scheme, and they do a lot of activities, none of them in Sandwich, unfortunately. Really keen to engage and get into Sandwich. Want to recognise that the Jubilee Centre stepped up in terms of their premises, and with my involvement, we had a meeting with councillor Tomlin, who's in that meeting, councillor Gray as well. And a small outcome from that is that we actually have got a workshop called Craft Oom taking place in April. So they are returning to Sandwich, and this is the first time for four to five years. And they are keen to try and get permanent activities up and running in Sandwich, but it's very much dependent on funding from ACC, et cetera, et cetera. So at least we've got to start here with the Jubilee Centre being their prime site for delivering their activities and services. Thank you very much for those updates. And councillor Ripley, could I ask you too?
You can. Very, very briefly, I attend the Sandwich Blue meetings. I have to stay, I don't really dig in, I can't do anything like that. But I just think we need to acknowledge the fantastic work that Sandwich Blue do when you walk around the town, it makes it glorious. So that's then. And also Gays and Salt, which I go to now, and is doing incredibly well. Just briefly, this is a little bit of an aside, regarding the refurbishment of the Forward's Play area, I saw something on the TV the other day about handicapped children. And they showed a little boy in a wheelchair, sitting in the middle around about specifically designed that would take the wheelchair in the middle of it. And I wonder if that's something that we could consider from here? I'm sure it costs fortune, but we just would see the nice.
Indeed, that is nice. Thank you very much on that. Councillor Murray.
Yes, briefly, so councillor Ripley, I forgot to mention, but anyway, Gays and Salt on Saturday, this Saturday coming into Saturday, there is a Easter camp for children and adults to run the reserve, and the Easter camp, all proceeds made available will go to the wards, Gays and Salt, to be upkeep of the reserve.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Roger. Oh, councillor.
Councillor Franklin, I attended a meeting with the Buckingham Commission last Thursday afternoon. And some of the points raised, jet speed incidents, that's where people on jet speeds travel at, famously high speeds on the river. There've been three incidents that were incidentally hidden. Beavers have been more active with obvious consequences along the river. The cables, if you remember, there were two cables on the bed of the River Star, yes, Sandwich. And one of the cables, as I don't feel removed, that's the cable which composed the traffic lights on the bridge of the star. Boys are always going missing and.
Saying for boys.
Two boys, navigation boys. Apparently they cost one thousand three hundred pounds to replace, so it's not entirely a joke in matters. Then the stoner cut, because there's been so much rain recently, it's been much of use. And what it does is it carries silt down the stoner cut and then deposits it where the stoner cut re-joins the river. And that is causing problems. It also, because the current is so fast, it also excavates some of the silt. And apparently there's a certain even, and there's a concern that it might be exposed or part of the record that shows a lack of navigation to shipping. Then the inevitable problem about collecting hard injuries. Commercial users of the river have to pay three hundred pounds a year. Four commercial users have not paid three hundred pounds for this financial year that's going to end. And the Buckingham Commission decided to pay a little cent for warning letter, and if after twenty-eight years they haven't paid up, debt collectors will be called in. I've been asked by Sandwich residents about two matters, one pollution to the number of boats on the stretch of the river, from which the Buckingham Commission is responsible. Apparently, the water is tested for pollution, both by Pfizer, which as you know still has a small part of the discovery part, and by the environment, which is it. And the current understanding is that the main polluter is the price of five thousand dollars. As regards the number of boats, it's kind of concrete what many people believe, if the number hasn't actually increased very much over the last year. And that's it.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Fortescue. And then briefly, councillor. Not to repeat anything, councillor Fortescue's always.
I was going to say there's twelve of care of people, I won't repeat it. I attended the age gym at the White Mill on the fifteenth of March. The renovations are progressing well, the cap is now back on, no tanks freely. But apparently, we've been stuck for so long, they've turned it, and they've damaged a thing called a worm drive, which is a piece of beach, it's snow heavy, it's about, god for long, about four foot wide, so it weighs about half a tonne wide. But that is the reason they need to get it craned in. So we do need to do this well. I mean, it hasn't worked in about nearly a hundred years, I think, power by wind, but if you throw that petrol engine, but we do want to see the sweeps going round, don't we, and middling down the traditional way, so.
Well, you're positive. Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you very much for that. And then item number eleven is financial information. This is to receive the Sandwich Town Council statement of accounts on the twenty-ninth of February, principle four. And this is income expenditure and budget, and this is attachment number three. Did we have any questions on this? If we do not, could I perhaps ask for a proposal? Thank you very much, councillor Murray. And the second of the accounts, and that's councillor Chu, if he's second in that. All those in favour of the accounts, could you please signify with your appropriate parts? You're all right. Oh, thank you very much. And that item's been carried. Thank you very much on that. Item number twelve is representation on outside bodies. Following the resignation of two town councillors from their appropriate positions on two separate outside bodies, members are now invited to nominate two replacement representatives. Councillor Gray has stood down from the Gays and Salt Nature Reserve, and councillor Murray has stood down from the town team. The council are to receive a report from the town clerk, and a decision will be required on this. This is attachment number four.
No, that's absolutely fine. I think it's quite self-expansory, what you've said. So really, it is asked in council. Obviously, the outside bodies is agreed again after the May meeting, but this is just if council wants to agree the representatives to be added for the next public minutes.
Councillor Chu, if you'd like to speak.
I'd like to nominate councillor Ripley for the town team. She doesn't know that I was going to nominate her?
I hope she's. Can I ask if councillor Ripley would like to be nominated?
Yes, I'd go, I'd go to every meeting anyway, so I'm happy to hold on.
Well, that's superb, because I have a second of councillor Ripley. So that's nominated my councillor Chu, that I seconded by councillor Morehouse. All those in favour of councillor Ripley being on the town team? I have a chance, okay. And thank you for that, councillor Chu, that's well voted. And also, we have the vacancy on Gays and Salt. Do you have anybody that wishes to volunteer for the Gays and Salt? Make sure to. Councillor Murray?
Well, the person might not, might refuse, but the person was the Gays and Salt secretary. He's done fantastic work trying to gain the charity status that the Gays and Salt had, sadly due to conflicts, as we say, he resigned. However, that conflict has now been removed from Gays and Salt. So I'd like to nominate if he accepts it, is councillor Wiles, a STC rep for Gays and Salt Nature Reserve.
Councillor Wiles, you tell us if you would like to accept that nomination. I would like to see if you want to accept that nomination. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you very much for that. So if we have no further nominations. I'd like to nominate councillor Pennington, if he'd be interested in doing it. Yes, I would like to do that. Obviously, that's excellent. And so that was nominated by councillor Chu, except for it by councillor Anderson.
Councillor Anderson.
All those in favour of councillor Pennington, who wants to be Gays and Salt, carry, thank you very much. Well done. That's it. Volunteering the entire evening, right? And so that takes us on to item number thirteen, and filling Friday initiative. Councillor Chuca is to share a report with members that proposes a initiative for councillors to consider temporary cover for the reception. This certification is entering the guildhall. This would be on a voluntary basis, and with direction, under-direction from the town clerk, this is attachment number five. Could I just ask if we don't go into the details like what colour pencils we have, or do we get access to the internet or things like that? Could we just look at this in the round, in the overall? Is it a good idea, and would we like to go ahead with it? Councillor Chuca, did you want to?
Just very briefly, you've sort of, I mean, so this is about principle agreement that those councillors that are interested and available, well, all are available, it's just to fill in on Fridays, the advantage of doing it, having done it for a number of weeks, and I want everyone that did it, is it is not choosing to engage with both visitors and also residents, and actually understand some of the problems that they experience and how we can help them and identify opportunities. It also enables us to have a closer relationship with our council staff, because they work in and around us, and it's just an easy way to engage with them. So those that don't want to do it, that's fine, in principle, it's a reasonable way of spending some time individually.
Thank you very much, councillor Chu. And can I just mention before I take any questions that this would be from ten AM till one PM, and obviously a voter would be set up, so we wouldn't be expecting the same people to do it over and over again. I believe councillor Anderson first.
I was just going to say, I very strongly support this. I think I certainly would enjoy volunteering to help out on Friday. But I was struck at the weekend when I encountered somebody who had a genuine reason for wanting to talk to somebody at the guildhall on Saturday, that we do have an additional problem of the weekend when the guildhall is closed. And I would like us to consider very seriously as to how we move that on, so that we do have people at the guildhall on Saturdays and Sundays.
Perhaps we can revert to sitting on Saturdays or something. Thank you for that option. We will put that, we will make a note of that before I come on. Councillor Murray?
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'm more than happy to put my hand forward to do it, however, I've worked with it, so obviously I work full-time, so self-help as well, so I can give the town clerks some reasonable timeframes if I can, but I'm more than happy to.
Absolutely. That's excellent there. And councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I'm willing to, but would it need any degree of training and preparation? Because the only anxiety would be that you might be addressing things that you didn't really know where to start with, that sort of show.
So you would not be expected to do anything that was beyond your comfort zone? There will be offices on-site as well, so you will never be left to your own devices. Literally, if you had access to it, if it was an issue, tap on the door, one of us is around and we can assist. So it's not a problem at all. You don't need to look at the laptops, you're not looking at any sensitive information, you're not handling the telephone calls either, it's purely the meet and greet. So if you know Sandwich well, you've got a head start on me, because I don't know it as well as those that live in here. So, you know, that's what it is, is spending the time to speak to people. Because when we're faced with, you know, lots of complex things, we're trying to juggle, giving time to people, it might be ten, fifteen, twenty minutes sometimes, that's really precious. And actually, if you could do that as a councillor, that would be on huge support. It's a great idea.
And of course, the upside of the whole scheme would that it would actually relieve the guildhall staff of that function, so that we would have the guildhall staff could then concentrate and get on with other work as well. So it will help to assist the staff as well. So could I have a proposal or a second for this?
Well, I'm second.
Oh, you're second, isn't it? Oh, sorry, councillor Chu, I hope that isn't it. And all those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. And that item has passed, thank you for that. Item number fourteen is the IT support arrangements and digital communications. Members are to receive a report from councillor Chuca that seeks to formalise the closure of the IT and digital communications working room, and to seek a debate with decision from members on the potential replacement of existing devices used by councillors. And a decision is required on this, and this is attachment number six. I would like to actually go first, and actually, because I've worked in IT, and I want to actually address councillor Chuca about this. The two quotations we've got, with those quotations, did we have any option to what we could specify, or were these the options that Cloud IT came forward with?
Yes, so the request made by Cloud IT was based on their knowledge as provided to many councils, was what would be their suggested solutions. So these were their top two that they proposed, in terms of why the iPad is chosen above the other, from their perspective, but also understanding their perspective. It's a lot easier for them to deal with those devices remotely, so it's cheaper for us as a council, because the other option that's put forward would need more time in terms of support. The other thing is, and it's a key consideration, is that those of us that use two-factor authentication on our own devices, that, I have asked them, can still run in parallel. So if somebody doesn't want to have the iPad, they don't need to. Secondly, if they want the iPad just for meetings, they can do that, but they can still run their business as well on their own devices using two-factor authentication.
Thank you for that. And just to continue, the reason why I ask that question, because quite a large number of commercial companies, and in fact the company that I actually belong to, Monday, Friday, still use something called Chromebooks. And the thing is with Chromebooks, I've done a bit of research into this, actually quite a lot of research into it, and the two options have been given, the iPad, I would say, is the better of the two options. And the second option is, which was the, I'm shifting my heart to the second one, was the Microsoft Surface Go three actually gets severe slating in reviews, IT reviews. So, and I could expand on that at later stage, but particularly with battery power and also performance for those issues there. What I'm suggesting, and these items are coming out at quite a large amount per item, Chromebooks you can get commercially from £199. They run Microsoft Office, you can have two-factor authentication on it, and I'm just putting forward as my personal proposal, I'm a councillor saying this, I'm not a mayor, and that I would like, unless there's any other options here, to go back to Cloudy IT and ask them, and we could shave off a third of the cost of the hardware just by looking at Chromebooks. And the Chromebooks are comparable to both the other devices in functionality, and in fact, they have, the Chromebooks have greater memory power and performance, RAM and performance there. So they also have, they would have the largest screen because the other two, the screens are quite small. So a Chromebook, you're looking at nearly a 12-inch screen size, so. And councillor Chukka?
So what I would suggest is we do defer it because it's not just the cost, there may well be technical issues that in the end would cost us more as a council in terms of support. So why don't we defer this until the next STC meeting? Give an opportunity to go back to Cloudy IT to give a technical assessment from their service perspective of supporting the Chromebooks.
Thank you very much for that, that's very good. Councillor Black, did you?
Yes, before we defer that, a couple of three points. First of all, we told about the glitch with the internal system about having to individually upload files to each individual account. Was that unknown? And secondly, has that now been solved? Because obviously, if you have to sit or stand and do it for each individual account, that does seem perverse.
That is most unusual. I'll have to ask the town clerk about this.
So the issue, I think, councillor Black referred to it, is for the agenda where I have to do each individual report at the moment as a PDF individually and I can't scan it on the photocopier. That's to meet the accessibility regulations for the website. So it's not that there's a particular issue with doing that, it just obviously takes a bit more time. But what I don't have at the moment is Adobe Pro. So if the offices have Adobe Pro, which we don't currently have, I think that can get around the problem. So I'm looking into that.
Because obviously, you're getting people and it does seem a bit of a risk at your time.
Yeah, I don't, that wasn't Cloudy or ONG's problem, it's because we don't have the software currently to facilitate doing Adobe in large quantities. So that's something I'm looking into.
And so we're sorry to interrupt, but also we did speak, I did speak with the town clerk about this, the software that we require can be purchased under the Adobe's authority, so it won't have to be brought back to the council here. And thank you very much for that, councillor.
I've got my own point.
Oh, we'll see, I'll have it, thanks. I'd say three. Did I just respond to that?
I guess. Just to say, I did investigate it once it became known as a problem with, in relation to ONG support, a number of councils. There are, and I investigate a number of council sites that they are supporting and some councils do actually have all the documents as one run, one series. So there is a solution out there, definitely, it's just tapping into it and using those.
Thank you very much, that. Councillor Black?
Yes, I'll resume. The second thing is to, in future, full implementation of recording and streaming all council meetings. And this is something that I'm going for, while I appreciate it takes a bit of time to get it sorted and stuff. Do we have even an outline date when this is going to happen? Because all thanks to Christine for her hard work, but I think it should be automated, surely.
Exactly, yeah.
Is it the day?
I'll get an answer for you in a month, so. So basically, it is one of those priorities, I'm sorry to say, has slipped, I've delivered the new website, I've delivered the IT migration, I've done the recruitment drive, you know, all the things I've delivered, and this is one of those that hasn't been at the top of the priorities. I need to get through this month, as I explained last month, there are lots of people around you leaving at the moment, there is no possibility I can get this done by the end of this month. It will be something I'll be looking at in April.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is any equipment, and whatever it is, will we include as a matter of standard approach, PDF, annotator and reader? Because quite frankly, one of the easiest ways to work is when you get all of the information, is to send out the PDF reader and annotator and you can, others can see I've got, you know, comments written on me and all things, highlighting things. Why are we not doing that? And if we are going to do that, it would be very useful to know that we can because it's a bit of a pain to convert to something else and then.
I agree, I agree with you fully. Thank you for raising that. I think councillor Black, that is something that we could ask for when we decide what device we're having, we could ask for that software to be accessible.
Any device will have.
Indeed, it will, as I know, and as you say, it's a specification of what's helping them on that. So if I go back to councillor Chukka, so I believe that came from you, based on the suggestion I said that we should look at other devices, could you just repeat your proposal?
So there's two elements here because there is the working group element of the report, seeking the formal closure of that. All elements of that have been delivered, including a technical solution to enable recording and live streaming. So that's separate from procurement activity that we need to undertake and proposing that between myself and the town clerk, we will go back to Cloudy IT to explore the Chromebook solution as an alternative and get their analysis and to bring that to the next town council meeting. And PDFs, are you seconding that?
Oh, no, no, I was just going to expand on the recording of the meetings. Did you want to expand? Yes, yes, very quickly on the recording of the meetings, what we have learnt is essentially at the moment, you need somebody who is pretty dedicated, as Christina is. Going for a strictly technical solution where you're just coming, pointing down and working it, it's, we're not there, we can spend our way into it, but it's finding an affordable solution that means the town clerk can point down, it all works. Thank you very much, that councillor Black. Could I have a second of the councillor Chukka's proposal, please?
Which one, is it the first one or the second or both?
Oh, both, on a block. So both of those on blocks. I think councillor Moore has these up first, so councillor Moore has a second one. So both the proposals that councillor Chukka mentioned, if you're unhappy with one of them, then obviously you can say so, but I would go on block on this. So all those in favour of that? No extensions, thank you very much, that is carried. And item number fifteen is frequency of meetings for Sandshank Council and the town clerk is to provide a report to members that proposes that the frequency of meetings for Sandshank Council be reduced by monthly before council, with further delegation to church committees. The proposal includes a special meetings for Sandshank Council committees for 2024 and 25. This is attachment seven A and seven B and a decision is required on this. I believe councillor Chukka may have something to raise on this matter.
Yeah, I wanted to put forward a counter proposal. So apologies if I have to go through a bit of detail, but I think it's really important that we don't jump from one issue into another issue. So the principle of reducing meetings, I completely support that, but we need to do it in a sensible manner and we should not lead to exposure of the council to a series of unintended consequences. I understand the key driver is to reduce the amount of administration time required to support meetings and also the amount of meetings we have to attend. It's a reasonable request, but simply reducing the number of meetings does not mean the work of the council goes away, so not at the moment. There are other ways this pressure can be reduced and some of those ways are already in train. So for example, we had an appointment of an asset officer identified, it's unfortunate that we have not come back to look at that at the HR committee level because we have lost three months since the previous candidates, putting the post didn't happen. That's one thing. Also, towards the end of last year, we agreed to the purchase of a financial accounting package and would free up 20% of the finance officer's time. Is this being realised yet? Don't need the answer, I'm just saying it's another solution. We've also recruited two-thirds staff into the office team. Is this helping or when will it start to help manage the workload? So we should also look at how efficient each meeting is run, there are ways in which we can make meetings run more efficiently. Taking that all into account, moving the town council meeting to every second month is not the right way to go in my view. It is the top of our pyramid, it is the escalation route if meetings for lower get cancelled. We have two meetings cancelled in the last couple of months, the Finance and General Purposes Committee, the Heritage and Townscape Committee. If we don't have a route upwards, then any decisions that might need to be taken in those meetings have nowhere to go to. The other thing is, the Finance and General Purposes Committee already has 32 responsibilities listed. If we move down more delegations into that meeting, what it means, the number of people in this room will not be a part of the meeting that will be the core meeting for this council. I don't think that's acceptable. Also, STC is where councillors from the KCC and Dover come along to give us updates. Are we saying that actually only having updates every second month is the right way forward? I don't believe so. So my proposal is, we retain the town council meetings as monthly meetings. The key thing that should happen is decoupling the Tolbridge Fund event from that same evening. My proposal is to move it quarterly so long as the delegated financial authorities are taken down to the Finance and General, Finance, the Tolbridge Fund Finance Committee so that we have that gap bridged. I agree that the Heritage and Townscape meeting should go to bimonthly meetings and then everything else that's in that report, I agree should continue. Are you okay? Yeah, I'll leave. Yes, so the other recommendations, I fully support human resources quarterly, planning still every month, the Mountswall Nature Reserve quarterly, as stated in the report. But the one key thing I think for the moment is that town councils should continue to meet and that's evident by the fact that the town clerk has actually had to build into next year, the first three months, the town council meets meeting happening because business demands it. So that was my proposal and that during 2425, we see if we have the opportunity for 2526 to review the frequency of the town council meetings.
Thank you very much for that. So councillor Murray?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm very happy councillor Chukka said that because I actually agree with that, it's good idea. However, I don't agree with the quarterly Tolbridge Fund meeting, I think it should be a separate meeting monthly because we have funding coming in from all different people and also we have things we need to pay for, things we need to pay for merchants and I don't think even some of the delegated powers to pay for things is right. I think if it comes out, Tolbridge Fund needs to be committed to this year and this needs to be done monthly. But I'm happy to second that if the memory has changed for the STBS meetings to have monthly separately.
Councillor Anderson?
Yes. I agree with the spirit of what councillor Chukka said. I do think the town council should meet on a monthly basis. I also think that Heritage and Townscape should meet on a bimonthly basis, as Chair currently argue, that that would make sense with the amount of business that we have. But one thing that really worries me about that is that we tend to get consultations run and they're totally unpredictable. And I suspect that if we decide to, for Heritage and Townscape to meet bimonthly, that we will have to hold the odd extraordinary meeting at short notice to deal with consultations. So that's what I would expect to happen and for us to just win better when it happens. As far as the Tolbridge Fund is concerned, the Tolbridge Fund is basically a grant-giving project, it also runs Guildhall, or partially runs Guildhall, but leaving the Guildhall side of it, a grant-giving project, the ones that have been involved with this, Christine and I have been involved with two or three, always have, they commonly have twice-a-yearly meetings or at most, we quarterly, and they have deadlines for grant applications and organisations that seek grants work towards those deadlines, that's what's once used to and currently I'm writing an application for Chukka, so of course there's a deadline and, you know, you can't say, oh, well, I won't bid it this month, I'll put it in whatever you want. You just have to work those deadlines and that's the realistic way that charities operate and that is thank you. And I suggest that that's what we do.
And I think councillor Pennington is next.
Thank you, councillor Pennington. I agree that there are a variety of ways in which we can make the operation of this town council more efficient. I think the primary task should be to look at delegations of committees and ensure that the committees are delivering to full council where necessary, proposals that have been fully researched and that they have ability within their parts of delegation to take things forward. Second is, I fully believe that the Tolbridge Fund just needs a complete review. I think that even with the present system, which I think is a lot of the desire, but at least we could maybe firstly introduce the kind of deadline system which councillor Anderson mentioned. Secondly, that individual councillors could be asked to look at, examine specific proposals so that they're not thrown into a void, but that a particular councillor could present a proposal.
Thank you very much for that, councillor. Councillor Franklin?
Thank you.
And then councillor Wiles? And then with those of the proposals?
Yeah, when I first come on the Sandshank Town Councils, we had 24 meetings a year. We had fortnightly, first Monday, the month of the third Monday. I think going down, we must go down to a monthly meeting at the town council, no agreement with councillor Chukka, but I also agree with councillor Dean about the townery Tolbridge Fund because it doesn't only give grants, does it? It pays salaries. And I think the salaries, the money should be done either for council, it should be done by committee. So I think the, at the present time, perhaps if we can separate the Tolbridge from the town council, I'd be totally different if they're even doing grants, but I think at the present time, we should keep the Tolbridge Tolbridge more monthly for the salaries. And so we get, you know, and then perhaps, you know, the new wage system being placed. But I was going to just say, the, what I'd like to know is, why has the planning committee switched from Wednesday to a Monday? And the Heritage Townscape Committee and the Finance and General Purposes also changed from Monday to Wednesday? We've always said they're making portable meeting meetings, now on a Monday. There is no quarterly meetings, all the less, August is missing and this is a quarterly meeting. So I think it's a quarterly meeting because we can't go, I know it's a very awkward August with holidays, but can you imagine going two months of September? It's a bit, it's a bit bogged down, isn't it? I think we do need, even as a slimmed down quarterly meeting, we do need an August meeting.
Thank you very much. And finally councillor Walts.
Yeah, I think for me, the key thing is, what are we here for? We're not here to be a talking shop. We're here to provide services out there, which we're not going to be doing at the moment. There's certain things we're doing, but by and large, most residents in the sandwich see very little outputs for what we do. We, we have too many meetings, I think we all agree on that. The town clerk and her staff, the town clerk herself is spending fifty percent of her time on servicing these meetings. That's just not viable in London. So I think the absolute priority is to separate the Tolbridge Fund from this meeting. We're going to be here till midnight at this rate. It's just not sensible for any of us. The Tolbridge Fund, yes, I agree, it has to be more than just grants, but that, but it looks after the investment. But there must be a way by which we say, the Tolbridge Fund should only meet three or five, four times a year. And other issues can be relegated to S T C. We should have a grant window for applications. So that we say that applications open in January, they close at the end of January, they're open in August, and then we give them applications twice a year. We obviously need a much more sensible, better process for that application. We've had two recent committees cancelled due to various reasons. The committees are not really working. We're getting too much on this agenda. Committees are, should be the place where the real legwork takes place and that's not really happening at the moment. In terms of reference to finance, a whole list of things which we're not really addressing, economic stress, this needs to. So I think we do need to, I'm open for ideas about how we might do this, but we do need to reduce the number of meetings. The biggest priority is to separate the Tolbridge Fund from this meeting.
So going back to councillor Chukka, there seems to be a theme that to separate the Tolbridge Fund from the town council meetings. Obviously, your recommendation was quarterly and there's been several other recommendations for them monthly. Would you consider amending your proposal to still having them monthly, but separate from the Tolbridge, uh, town council?
My, my proposal was that the authorities for, that that would sit with the Tolbridge Fund would be delegated down to the Tolbridge Fund Finance Committee. I would be reluctant to go to, sorry, I'd be reluctant not to go to quarterly because if the driver is to reduce the number of meetings, and main purpose of that particular meeting is about the funds alongside the payment of staff, I, I think we should go quarterly and I'd, I'd like to stick with that. And if my proposal fails, it fails.
Thank you very much.
Very briefly. Yeah, just quickly, Mr Mayor, can I just point out, when, when the sandwich council majority came in in the beginning of twenty twenty two, all the committees were then ceased and there was three committees back, which is fine, I get that. And all delegated powers have taken away from the set committees and given back to full council and to the Tolbridge Fund. I don't think it's appropriate for them to go back on their word and change that for, for events for us to go to quarterly and get delegated powers to Finance and General Purposes committees for the finances and the Tolbridge Fund. I do still feel it should be four committees and four councils that take, take the decisions for going to Tolbridge Fund and the, the town council.
So can we have a second that we've got a proposal on the floor? Do we have, we're really running out of time. I will have to, your second amendment, okay, thank you very much.
Just be clear on the, just be clear on the proposal, please, Mr Mayor.
Indeed, indeed. Councillor Chukka wrote it, reiterate it, but I've asked him to accept the, your amendment and he has, unfortunately. It's fine, exactly that. So I'm sorry, this is the first proposal that's been put forward.
It's been segmented. Monthly, monthly town council meetings, but quarterly S T B Fs.
Exactly.
That's what I'm suggesting.
And this is for twenty five, uh, twenty four, twenty five. It also, as a caveat, this needs to be endorsed at the annual meeting of the council because that's where we actually agree the schedule for next year, and that is in the standing order. So even if we make a decision here today, it does need to be endorsed at that meeting. So just quickly running through, town council monthly, the planning committee monthly, the heritage and townscape bimonthly, Moxwall quarterly, Finance and General Purposes monthly, the Tolbridge Fund Finance Committee monthly, delegated down from Tolbridge Fund to the Tolbridge Finance. And it makes sure those delegations are in place before we move the Tolbridge Fund meeting to a quarterly meeting.
And we've had a second for that, and I, so are you proposing, or making proposal amendment to that proposal? Would, would you accept it, Mr Mayor? It's, it's been proposed and seconded. I shouldn't really allow this, really. Sorry, it's been proposed once.
No, I should all just state once my proposal's seconded because it's a moment.
Yeah, I'm very sorry about that. So the town clerks and that.
Declarify, declarify that councillor did say there may be a need for more extra ordinary meetings. And that may have to be included, but that's not a deviation from monthly and quarterly.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. We've had a proposal, we've had a second by law, we have to go to the vote on this now. All those in favour of councillor Chukka's proposal, please show and hold them up because we need to count them, please.
Two events, three events, yes, three events.
Four and three events. Can I have my vote recorded, please, town clerk?
Yes.
So that proposal has been accepted also, and it has to be ratified at the end of Saturday. Thank you very much for that. Item number sixteen is standing orders working group. We'll just do this one before we take a break. And this is a member to receive a report from councillor Ian Black on proposals to form new working groups with a way forward for reviewing the procedures and delegations. This is attachment number eight. And a decision is required on this as swiftly as possible, please. Councillor Black, would you like to?
Yes, it's a bit like, I read for number eleven, boss, which it was a negative come up. And this and the previous item are actually intimately linked. There was absolutely no question about it, and that's what I was trying to get at. So there are three parts to this. One, we, I believe that the way we nominate people for committees needs urgent review and that has to be done for the April meeting. That's point number one, and I think the existing standing orders working group should do that. There are, there are two other items. The financial regulations need to be looked at. Been a long time since they have been amended, this from the R F O itself. Some stuff to date. Who should do that? It's the common of the easiest. Town Council or F and G P? I don't mind. Somebody needs to look at it. And I'm not suggesting our existing working group does it unless you ask this to. Right. Third point is, if you're going to make, reduce the number of committee meetings, we'll talk about delegation, terms of reference. Somebody needs to go through this in detail. We suggest that really this, this could be a completely reformed working group, or you could use the existing one. But if you have a reformed one, then people can volunteer and people can also step down for it. Quite simple. Three proposals, one urgent, two need to be, the second and third need to be considered whether council or F and G P. Then you need to decide who's going to do it.
Could I just ask you one question, councillor Black? And you said that it needed to be done by April.
Yes.
Would there be the capacity to undertake that?
Yes.
There would be. Okay, thank you very much. It's just a question that might be asked. Councillor Murray, did you have a question?
Mr Mayor, I suppose to be clear on a couple of things. Uh, one main thing is how, how to appoint councillors to the committee. That is up to the leader of the council. That is up to the mayor of the council to do that. And the bestest thing regarding our schedule weeks that we do every year, regarding things such as events and charities, et cetera, et cetera. So I still do feel that the command should have the right of place to say, who goes on what committee, who goes on what outside body, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing I'd like to speak about is the, is the public participation part of the standing orders. Yes, we agree that, that five minutes is fine. That's absolutely fine. However, there's been an advocate where myself and, believing our councillor Mallett has asked a request to speak at public participation part of full council, and we've been denied twice. However, on a couple of occasions, I have, I must admit, I have as well been finance general purposes last night. But other councillors have spoken about things that other committee members have challenged the town clerk on this and it's, and nothing to come about of it. So I would like, I like the working group, the standard working group to look at it, to whether councillors are allowed to speak at the public participation part because they may be representative of a resident who doesn't want to be here, who can't get here, and they would like to speak on their behalf. I do feel that free speech, everyone's entitled to opinion, everyone's entitled to free speech in this country, and I do feel that councillors have the right to speak at the public participation.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So we've got a total from councillor Black. So did anybody else have any other questions on that before we get a second down? And then we'll do that. Everybody final of that.
Councillor Walts. I agree the, um, the way we put it needs to properly examine. In terms of the recommendations, I think, I'm not sure about working with whether this should just be an F U P matter, but I, I think if it's not, it should be a working group that reports to F U P. That's where it should be. As I said before, we're not using the delegated powers properly at the moment. And I think clearly this is a matter for F U P. I think there should be a tweaking of the standing orders in terms of reference to allow any councillor to sit at any committee and speak at the table, but not to vote. So that, so that when things come to council, everyone has had a chance to have their say. And we're not spending a long time debating what particular committee is darn well said. But we can have confidence that that has been thoroughly looked at and that we're just ticking it, moving on.
I'll do so.
Yes. Did we, I think the councillor Walts. Did we have a second at councillor Black? And all those in favour, please show.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, who was saying, the working group?
Oh, is this going to be a uniform?
I don't know.
The suggestion I've made is that you, you have a choice at the council. The urgent thing is the committees. Um, then in many, you are going to put up more committees and people stand or not stand for that. And I suggest you do that then. I really doubt you have the capacity to do much more between now and May apart from the membership of the committees. However, the F and G P may take a different view of that. I've not discussed that in detail with councillor Walts, but that's up to you folks. That's your decision. We in the working part here have done an awful lot of work, but I'm not sure everyone's necessarily wanting to continue for a minute.
So, so just to clarify, are we saying then this decision is now to defer to the Finance and General Purposes Committee? Is that the decision you're going?
Because that's what. I mean, the second and third. Second and third, the first one is S T C.
Yes, but sorry, I'm just not clear what, is your voting on at the moment? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I agree because also I have great reservations myself of being able to implement something for reviewing committees for the April meeting and getting a report in and getting it tied up. So I would personally, as a councillor and not as a mayor, would like to defer the first item and secondise them. We need to clarify who's overtaking the work.
Right, I think the point, that at the request of not overburdening the administration, this was, I defer this from February and I will be extremely concerned if you defer it again. This is a critical decision about committees. And to defer it again, where we've already once deferred it, to take account of workload, I think is completely inappropriate.
I think, I think councillor Black, you need to readdress the timeline then because you've put a lot of pressure on, on either committee members or the town clerk to say that we're going to produce something for the April meeting. And the town clerk has said a couple of times tonight that this is the year end, we can start the new financial year. I think we all ought to calm down and think back and it's, I'm not, we don't have to defer it, but put a, a different timeline on to it. I think to, to say that we've got four weeks to come up with something, which is literally days before an, an annual festival or break in the year is, and lots of people are going away on holiday. We could use a week or ten days from people being away. What I'm trying to do is realistic about this.
Well, your alternative is defer the committees until June drop.
Indeed, there's a good suggestion. Can I bring in two other options here, sir? Councillor Franklin.
Yeah, generally at the start of the four years, the committees are always set up and you use tweak and then council moves on being having a committee. So I think personally, I think the committees are working out quite well. I mean, the working group, I think they reach that conclusion. I think the council is there, but personally, you're just going to go on and on and on deferring. I think the time now is the crunch has come that we, we say, thank you for all you have already done. But we just keep the committees and we, we get the mayor. And some of it will tweak it. I think even myself, I'm thinking of coming up a couple of the committees because I want too many committees and I, I would like to stand down from some of the committees. So I think that's what, what should happen. Individual councillors should talk to the mayor and say, you're not going to commit it. It should be spot around. But I don't think anything for the sledgehammer approach, there's nothing worth it. It should be finished.
And then councillor Murray. Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I, I understand where Mr councillor Black's coming from, but I also understand where you're coming from. We're coming up to the end of the civic year for twenty twenty three, new civic year coming in May, new mayor, hopefully not, hopefully not. Um, we, the trouble is, it's absolutely up to the mayor to decide who goes on what committee. If the town clerk wants to stand down from planning, you'll want to have to put someone else on it. That's how it is. But I'm just, it's just a story, Jeff. But that's how it should be. I do feel this should be deferred after the new mayorship started in May.
So councillor Black, did you want to head up your proposal? Would you prefer to amend it?
I will be prepared to amend it if you defer changes to committees. But if you're still insisting that committees have to be sorted in May, no, I would not.
In the, sorry, Mr Mayor, in the last, the last three years I've been, been in council, in the last twelve years I've been involved in council, every four years, nothing, the committees never really changed. They never have done. It's always been the same people now. And for the years and years of the old, the old boys that used to run it years and years ago, they've all stayed in the same place for those twenty, twenty five years. So not councillor Newell's and old boy councillor Frank Newell, I am sorry. So but it's, that's how it's been and that's how it's, it's all, it's good that people do tend to be friends, you get more experience, but some people have more experience in other things with me. I've got no clue of finance. So my, my wife knows that for me. So, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that in, after Easter, if I could communicate to all councillors with the current committee structure, so all the committees that people are currently sitting on and ask you and give you maybe two weeks to think about whether or not there are committees that you would prefer to step down from. There are committees that you actually want to step up to or, or, you know, if you want to have a change or like councillor Franky said. And then that's something that we can work with because it, it, it's like called a slate system. So basically, because you, you were elected for a year now, you've been in your first year. It's a system, we've already got the committee structure that we've been working with. So then that gives everybody an opportunity to have their input onto whether or not it's a committee. The committees they're prepared to stay on, or whether there's some that they'd actually like to join, or whether there's some that they'd like to. Because then that would give us something to work with. I think at the moment, it's very difficult for everybody to sit here and we don't want an occasion where we sit through a meeting where everybody's individually got to be voted on or, you know, every committee, when we've got about eight of them to get through.
I'm sorry, with respect, that is not the case. You, you have, you have three situations. One situation where as an intact member of people and they're suddenly, ain't got a problem. You have a second situation where you have not got sufficient people and you're going to act like a good job. Right? Right? Your really, only problem is where there's more people that want to go in the committee than are actually places on the committee. That is the concern, that's where the problems have been, and that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. So how we can address this is we could actually change the terms of reference to allow more people on the committee?
No, that's one way, but that's not what we're here. You set up a working group and you quickly do it. It's not a huge task because the first two are not a problem. The third one is the problem.
Councillor Walmsley. Okay, if I can just read out the terms of reference. The council shall at its annual meeting or otherwise as required, and subject to a proper motion, appoint such committees as it deems necessary and confirm their remit, terms of reference, levels of authority, meeting dates and membership. And that's done at the annual meeting. Now, the question is, it's nothing to do with the mayor, by the way. It's a meeting, does that? So the question for us is, how do we want to appoint members to committees? Do we want to do it by a voting? A secret vote, a show of hands, or just does it come out of the ether in some way? These are the questions. My view would be either we have a formal process at that annual meeting where we have nominations for the committees. If there's fewer than required for each meeting, then we ask for additional. If there's more than required, then we have a vote. That would be the democratic way to do it.
I think this is slightly out of hand.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to take too long. It's, we used to have the formal traditional mayor making, didn't we, in the courtroom? Last year, we started, we had the formal mayor making here, didn't we? And the committees, and then we had the traditional mayor making on another night. We are planning, I think, to do it all on the same night. But at the moment, we just would work, we'd put that time schedule about an hour before we did. So the committees really, we sorted it out prior and then announced it on that night. On the mayor making.
I just wanted to say personally, as a councillor, I think the ideas, ideas have been forward as preposterous. Because when I set up the committees with, with the town clerk this year, I set them up based on the people's skills at the committees. If somebody appoints councillor Marine to a finance committee, he's, he's just not going to turn up to the committee, the committee meetings. And likewise, if you appoint me to Gaz and Souls committee that meets on a Monday afternoon, I won't be turning up to those meetings. I still think myself, talking as a councillor, the best way, not as the mayor, but that the committees are set up on the basis of people's knowledge and skills and, and their vocations. And I think that's, I would say that's the best, best option to go ahead. Because it's being done on merit, it's not being done on who wants to go where with whose best friends and, and to, to achieve certain objectives. So I think, I think it's preposterous and councillor Tomlinson.
I just wanted to add that, I think that works, if that works well, it works well. But if there is conflict, we do need a way to resolve that kind of thing. Because that's an issue. Because when it's smooth and people match and it works. But the issue has to be, what do we do when there is a conflict and the, and the system for addressing that?
And to answer your question, councillor Tomlinson, when the committees were set up, they were set up on a provisional basis. And then the town clerk took input from people and two or three of you did actually change committees. And that seems like the most sensible option to, to go forward, so.
Very last year. Just quickly, I totally agree with what you're saying because at, at the end of the day, the voting, if there's more people to go on the Townscape Heritage that are on the finance and have voted for it. I quite like Townscape Heritage because I do a lot of work regarding the towns regarding in the Townscape Heritage. If there's seven people that want to go to take, they go to a vote. I know there's councillors here that don't like me, that's absolutely fine, that's their opinion, it doesn't bother me in the slightest. But I could get voted out of Townscape Heritage because others want to get in and vote in it instead. I don't like that idea, I think it's totally wrong. It should be done on skills or which, it should be done on merit of your experience and what you have in town and what you know, the knowledge that you have with the town and all of this.
Finally, final point, councillor Walmsley. I think we're all adults, so we can all know what our skills are and our weaknesses as well. So we can all nominate ourselves to, perhaps a compromise on this, rather than having a voting, is for the chairs of the committees to get together, draw up a draft membership and then send it out in advance of the town meeting. And if people have a violent objection to any aspect of that, they can make it clear and then we can maybe reach a consensus.
Might get new chairs.
Huh?
Might get new chairs and we've.
No, the chair is elected at the first meeting.
Every year, we go on, eh? Every, every year, a new chair is elected for a committee. Because, because that's like, because if councillor Anderson becomes mayor this year, the next year, the next year, they will need a new chair for that committee because you wouldn't be able to stay as chair without committee. Could you change the terms of reference when, when they came in 2022?
So with all due respect, councillor.
Right, I strongly object to this being called preposterous. I strongly object to this being called preposterous. You may not agree with it, but if you're going to use words like that, then it's bringing in for everybody. And this is not as a way to build on. I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise that, because you might regret that. But I strongly object to your word preposterous.
The councillor Black, the item that is in discussion, we've been discussing for 20 minutes. So it's a very emotive subject. Everybody has got views. We've had, this is the largest number of views we've had on this item. Everybody's got views on it. And with all due respect, you're bringing something to us that needs to be implemented within a month's time with a, a national holiday in that month. And you're saying that it will go ahead perfectly and then you're dealing with that.
I didn't say that. You are asked for the resource, I've spoken with colleagues, and we believe there is some. But if you call it preposterous, up to you.
That's my phraseology.
Yes, it is.
So going forwards, councillor Black has put proposal forward. And can I have a second before it? It's been seconded by councillor Pendleton. And can you all vote accordingly, please?
Yes, seven.
Okay, that's carried, so we'll be expecting the results of the committees for the April meeting. At this point, I will adjourn the town council meeting for a five-minute break.
Yes, it is. Because of the time slipping, can we, our request, please, that if councillor agrees to, because item 17, 18, 19 are to receive their note. Can we, can we either do them on block to simply note them? Or can we defer them to the next meeting so we can carry on with item 20? And then we can get on with the, the. There's a lot of applications.
Thank you very much for that proposal. So that's a proposal there to actually take the following items of 17, 18 and 19 on block as they are just notable items. And then we can move on to the grant applications. So that's been put forward.
And just one thing, Mayor, I need to tell you, on item 18, the Saint Dominic Church is up there from the charity commission. I've spoken to the chair with the Saint Dominic Charities and they are calling a meeting to discuss the response they have had from the charity commission. Once they have their meeting, they will let me know and I will report back to the council. I hope they shall remind you. Thank you very much for that.
So are you seconding it, councillor?
No, no, because the decision's required, it is. They're not having a decision. Says here, decision required, decision required, it's all required.
Yeah, just decision to note the information, yeah, yeah, that's a decision, yeah.
So that proposal's been put forward. Are you seconding it?
I agree with the principle that just the risk register, I think that should be noted, but it should come to FGP for more detailed scrutiny. Because there are things on there which I think all need to be looked at and if GP hasn't yet.
Yep. Yes, exactly on, on exactly the same point. I'd have needed to propose that we took it away from GP to review it and to bring it back to SDC in three months' time, maybe. Brilliant, thanks very much. And are you seconding it? Yeah, thanks very much.
All those in favour, please, it's required. And then item number, let me see this now. Item number 20 is the insurance renewal for San Bush Town Council. Members to consider a report from the responsible financial officer for a recommendation for the insurance renewal and the decision is required here. And this is attachment number 12.
Thank you, councillor Walmsley. I mean, the, the increase is disturbing. It's disturbing that the three other providers weren't prepared to offer a quote. I'm just questioning the email from Zurich. It says that the guild hall is over 20 million. That's the value of the guild hall. Or is that the, the original cost to cover?
What does that 20 million refer to?
It's probably the rebuild cost, actually.
The rebuild cost? It seemed a large figure anyway. But I don't know what option we've had. Can we go out to other providers or do we just bite the bullet and go with this?
Yeah, there have been huge challenges because we have listed properties, we have, you know, very bespoke individual, you know, these are not usual properties in buildings. It's very, very difficult and we are, have spent a lot of weeks trying to get, you know, her head around. Some companies were quite certain properties and others, so we, we have come up with this is the only viable solution at the moment. And that's, you know, after a lot of, a lot of time we've spent.
Also, I did want to mention, everybody picked up about the flood, the flood rescue. And both the other consultants said that in order to get flood rescue, Zurich seemed to be the only one to couple the properties in the flood zone. So that's just from me as a councillor and it's not too swingy the way councillor Chook and then councillor Black.
I'd like to propose that we do accept this on the basis of the three-year policy. I'd like to thank the finance officer for the sterling which he's done. Because actually, there's quite a lot of detail in this and please pass that on to her. This is a good report. We've had, you know, a variance in the past, but this is really good and I think we should thank her for that. I think also, let's not fool ourselves, insurance across the piece has gone up extraordinarily. Carnage insurance, household insurance, et cetera. I am not surprised that it's 35%. And I would propose that we accept a three-year policy.
You can, councillor Black.
I've just wanted a bit of clarification. I agree with the points that councillor Chook has made about the workers going to do. The three-year one, is that fixed price per year for three years?
Yes.
It is, okay, thank you. That's all I was. It is. Okay. Thank you. That's all right.
And councillor?
Yes, I'd like to second councillor, because, yeah, I mean, we're all on a flood plain here, aren't we? It's all about properties, it's not just this building. And so I think, well, I had a house insurance at Old Monument. I was like, how come my house is sort of, you're half a mile in the river? I said, I live on a hill. You just make a secret in half a mile in the river, and it's like, ah.
Thank you very much for that. So we've had a proposal, and we've had a seconder, and everybody votes accordingly. Okay, and that's, that is carried. Thank you very much. And item number twenty-one is a date of the next full council meeting, and that's the twenty-ninth, Monday the twenty-ninth of April, twenty twenty-four. Welcome to the Sandwich Town Council ordinary meeting of the council, trustees of Sandwich Tollbridge Fund on Monday the twenty-fifth of March, twenty twenty-four. Item number one is apologies for absence.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Peter Green, who has a commitment, and councillor Nick Brown for a travel commitment.
Thank you very much. Item number two is declarations of interest, and this is to receive any declarations of the scope of explosive or punitive interest from members in respect of business that has been transacted on this agenda tonight. Councillor Marie first.
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. I have a disapproval interest in Sandwich Open Air Festival. I am on the, I'm STC rep. I have no voting rights, so I can vote for this, for this item. The Set Fifty's, I help out as an event organizer for part of the CEA. I have no voting rights, but I will vote for the, for the application. And the Sandwich Slits Forty's, I help them regarding the event management, and I have no voting rights with their privacy, but I will be voting for their, for their application.
And councillor Malik?
Yes, specifically the Sandwich Slits Forty's, but otherwise I'm just involved in the, the events which are raising money, but I will, I will not vote for Sandwich Slits. Thank you very much for that.
Was there any other, councillor Wiles? Open Air, I'm volunteering here, but I don't, I don't really, keep really interested in the interest of us. I think it's mainly where people in committees, you know, close out again, volunteer. Oh, for Open Air, is that? Thank you very much for that. And item number three is minutes of the previous meeting and committees, and this is to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the SGC's trustee of Sandwich Tollbridge Fund, held on the twenty-sixth of February, twenty twenty-four, and to consider any matters arising from those minutes not covered elsewhere in the agenda, and this is attachment one A. Do we have any comments? If we have no comments, could I have a proposer and seconder? Proposed by councillor Tuch, seconded by councillor Fortescue. All those in favour, please show. That's passed. And then we have the second one, is to receive the minutes of the Sandwich Tollbridge Fund Finance Committee meetings held on the twentieth of November, twenty twenty-three, the eleventh of December, twenty twenty-three, and the fifteenth of January, twenty twenty-four. And they would be items one B, one C and one E. Do we have any comments on those three minutes? If not, could I have a proposer and a seconder, please? Councillor Tuch, and could I have a second, councillor Ripley? All those in favour, please show. That's been passed. And finally, to receive the minutes for the museum and archive committee meeting held on the twenty-third of November, twenty twenty-three. Do I have any comments on that at all? If not, could I have a proposer? Councillor Ripley and a seconder, councillor Black, for the museum and archive committee. All those in favour, please show. Stop one. One extension there. That item wasn't passed, and, oh, two, sorry, two extensions. Councillor Tuch and councillor Malik. That item is passed. Item number four is payment schedules. Four A, to approve the Sandwich Tollbridge Fund payment schedule for March, which is attachment two A. Item four B is to approve the Sandwich Tollbridge Fund Guildhall payment schedule for March. That would be attachment two B. And four C is to approve the museum and archive payment schedule for March, and that would be two C, attachment two C. Are there any comments on these items? If there aren't, could I have a proposer and a seconder, please? Councillor Franklin is proposing, and councillor Wiles is seconding that one as well. All those in favour, please show if you have comments. And that item is passed. Thank you very much. And item number five, finance and investments, to receive and approve the Sandwich Tollbridge Fund statement accounts of twenty-ninth of February, twenty twenty-four, attachment three A. Item B is to receive and approve the Sandwich Tollbridge Fund Guildhall statement accounts as of twenty-ninth of February, twenty twenty-four. And that's attachment three B. And item C is to receive and approve the Sandwich Guildhall Museum statement of accounts as of twenty-ninth of February, twenty twenty-four, and that is attachment three C. And item D is to receive and approve the quarter-to-cheat gear assets management monthly investment report as of the twenty-ninth of February, twenty twenty-four, and that is attachment three D. Were there any comments or queries? Councillor Ripley?
Can I just raise a question regarding quarter-to-cheat gear at the pound? Is there some way, at some stage, that we can review them? Because I'm not sure that all of the companies or the businesses or whatever they are, you know, I would be morally happy with them going with. I'd like there to be some sort of review or something to make sure that we're all okay with what they're doing in terms of morals, that, you know, in that measure.
I think councillor Franklin might have the answer.
Yeah, we did have us a few years in town. We do have an ethical policy, so they, they do, um, stock your shares in an ethical company, so we do it like in the back house.
But it would be nice to have a review of that, wouldn't it?
That was actually a link to you. We had a book clip. They passed a book clip to us, and they told us what our portfolio is, and in that book clip was the ethical requirements, and so it was things like arms and armaments and cigarettes and carcinogenic items like that. And if you, did you want, what sort of review? Did you want, did you want somebody to come here or in a letter, or would you like a review?
I don't know, really. I would just like to ensure that everything that is down on their list, all the companies that are involved, are not only on their ethical, their ethical list, but on mine and everybody else's ethical list. So, I mean, it's my personal thing. It's, you know, anything to be natural, it's, it's, no, that's just a very personal thing. I'd like to make sure that there's nothing on there that I would find offensive.
Can I just suggest the problem is, is different people have difficult, different ethical standards, so we'd need some criteria for them to work through.
No, I understand that, but, you know, you would, you would just put my mind at rest anyway.
Yeah. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, I mean, one of the ways in which local authorities are advancing their climate emergency policies is to look at their portfolios. Because fossil fuel companies, exploration companies clearly contravene private emergency policies. So, as I remember it, I haven't looked at the Cruelty Investments very recently, but as I remember it, we are investing fossil fuels in our climate policies. So leaving aside the standard ethical issues, which I tick, are armaments, smoking, alcoholic assault. There are new ones now, and this council is not that, the climate emergency policy, and trying to do something about it. So I think on that, on that ground alone, there's reason to look at the Cruelty.
Councillor Tuch? I don't get stand-up. I don't get stand-up. Can I just, we're getting tired, it's a long night. The issue of this investment portfolio comes up every time. What I would suggest is we've agreed earlier that we would move the meeting to quarterly. I think, my suggestion is that we all take time over the next quarter to look back at the booklets that we've given by them, and then we have a conversation, because we have to ourselves agree what our policy is, rather than bring them in and then have multiple ideas. So I think we take a bit of time, come back with your own ideas, and we can have a collective view either the next meeting or the one hour, six months' time, you know. This is something that we should do, and let's not do it in haste.
Just briefly, yeah, so the Cruelty, Cruelty, they gave us a load of booklets for councillors that wasn't there, so there's quite a bunch. I think they're in the office downstairs, and they met us last year, but I think things have changed. It would be good idea to get them again for the next quarter, now it's quarterly, to get them down for the next quarter, to check the rest of the garden, what they're.
Before we do bring them in, we do need to determine this council, what our ethical standards are.
The trouble is, you're still going to have to wait till the next quarter anyway, because you've changed, you've changed the meetings now to quarterly, so you've still got to wait till the next quarter, so.
So having noted councillor Ripley's request, that will be taken forward to the responsible financial officer. Could I ask for a proposal, seconder, for the financial items that I read out just, just now? That's councillor Tuch and councillor Morehouse. So all those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. That's passed. Item number six is the grant applications, and trustees are to receive and consider a report from the responsible financial officer with the funding requests that are pending, and have been received in the first tranche of funding applications for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five financial year. Funding applications are attached to the report as appendices, and the details are as follow. Baypoint requesting amount of ten thousand pounds, not stipulated. Sandwich Open Air Festival requesting amount of three thousand pounds. Sandwich Music Events Association requesting amount of one thousand pounds. Guild Music and Arts Festival requesting amount of five thousand pounds. Dover and Deal Beatkeepers Association requesting an amount of one hundred pounds. Whitemare Rural Heritage Centre requesting an unspecified amount. And Sandwich Slits Forty's requesting an amount of two thousand five hundred, and decisions are required on these. Councillor Tuch.
Could I just suggest, before we get into what is going to be not an easy discussion, that we just reflect on the fact that we have allocated some of ten thousand pounds to distribute to applications. My, I would want to make a proposal that actually we don't allocate all of that tonight. We've already heard from Sandwich in Bloom as a quester, they will lose any opportunity for another twelve months. I don't think that's acceptable. I think we, and it's come up, I, I, I'd sort of written out my script, but councillor Redson, councillor Wiles already said exactly the same things that I'm concerned about. This process is not working. We do not manage this effectively as a trustee, so we need to take time to actually come up with a efficient process, take the next six months to do that, delegate it down to the Tollbridge Fund Finance Committee to, to commission that, so that we then run a window where applications come in, that we advertise that, not just have the same three or four applicants each time, and that we then run a efficient process. We have come to this meeting with vetted applications. We have holes in a number of these, so even if we were to gloss over the holes, it brings us back to the point, we've got twenty-four thousand pounds worth of bids here in, in the year before, the year we want to give the money away. It is madness. So I would want, my proposal is, we need to now allocate fifty percent of the funds available, five thousand, and we retain five thousand until September, when we've got an efficient process in place. That is painful for the number of applicants here, but the reality is, the bids on the table cannot be met by the total funds, let alone anything else. So I made a proposal, we accept fifty percent tonight, and then, and then judge the merits of the bids, and if it means just equally sharing out those that we are happy to support, a portion, and that's what we do.
And if you feel that, that was just related, and then councillor Morehouse, councillor Marie, and councillor Wiles, can that all please?
Just a spice of sugar. If you'd be willing to accept an amendment, to make it sixty-five, thirty-five percentage. So we agree on six and a half thousand tonight, and the same three and a half thousand for the units at once, fine.
I'm comfortable severing it slightly. My issue is that we've already agreed to an insurance policy increase that we have not budgeted for. The majority of that is going to come out to the Tollbridge Fund finances. We are just running away with ourselves another half a year. We'll be saying we need to draw down more cuts. This is not the right way to run as trustees of that fund.
And I just ask, before I move on, do you accept councillor Morehouse's amendment or not?
Sixty-five, thirty-five, I'm, I'm, I'm happy. If you've got rationale for that, it's tight.
Just being a little bit more generous, genuine, generous. With the, with the funds that are.
Yes, and I'm happy to accept it, because we did stop our number of requests for a number of months, so I'm, I'm happy to accept that there is.
I know where I am now.
Move on, councillor Marie.
First, me, I think that proposal's ludicrous. Some of these events here are summer events, and they, 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 they rely on this money for the events to go ahead. Sandwich Open Air Festival requesting three thousand pounds, that's to pay for the bands. It costs twenty, twenty-two thousand pounds to run the event every year. It's gone up, because it's now a live run event. The Sandwich Music Events Association, that is part of the, the part of the Sandwich Fifty's Festival, that is paying for all the bands to be on the square in the weekend outside, and they're paying for that. The Tollbridge Fund will pay for those bands to be on the square, for a free event for the town. The, the Whitemore Heritage Centre, they request, they're requesting two thousand one hundred and sixty pounds. I just spoke to me, Summer Hames, she said they're requesting that for later, so they can get their, their long heritage, the, the Whitemore working again for the Tories. It boosts tourism in the town, so I agree with that. And also, Sandwich Slits Forty's, they're requesting two and a half thousand pounds. I'm sure the Chair will say something as well, but the two and a half thousand pounds is to keep this event going. If we don't have this money, the event will close, and there will be no, there'll be no event especially for next year for V E Day, because once the money's gone for this year, if we have no funding, that's it, it's gone. They, they require the full amount that they've requested, and this has been put off long enough. This was deferred for a long time, with some of the festivals relying on doing Christmas time, even when the event's contemplated to cancel off, because they're so, because they, they require this money. That's my opinion.
Thank you for those comments. And then moving across, councillor Wiles. Oh, sure, of course, absolutely, no problem. And then councillor Malik, do you need to speak as well?
Yes, I would like to, please. Yeah, I, I, my only comment is, we do need to review this whole process, because we're getting applications that are unsatisfactory. There should be a much tighter pre-vetting process, where all the boxes are ticked before it comes to decision. Because we're having to look at effective applications, and we can't make proper decisions, thanks for that. So that's my end of comment.
And then I'm allowing councillor Malik to actually speak. Do you have something to serve out?
Yes, thank you very much. The, it is very contentious, Sandwich Slits, I realise that. There is.
Um, there are two people who, uh, in this government who have strongly objected, both of whom I admire highly. And I listened to their objections, and we had no changes. Uh, when Rotary was there, the, um, the German presence was huge, absolutely. This is wound down considerably, this wound down to the point where the, the one person who caused the upset has been asked not to attend. That has happened. I appreciate that there are further, uh, what, the Aparitifor, um, appearing, they are at the back of the display. One of them in particular is very good with demonstrating, talking about the event. Um, we refer to us, ourselves as living history, we refer to ourselves as a museum. Um, and in a museum, you get things that you personally might not want to see, in the same sense, we, we see things in a museum downstairs that we might not want to see, um, and information. Um, and it will keep on changing as things, as the, as the public prefer not to see things, or as they prefer to see things. I mean, something that struck me was the, um, the headdresses of the Eighth Army, that the desert rats portrayed is actually the black and white of the Hamas. But it's so separated from that, that we wouldn't even look at it, we wouldn't even know. Um, and a lot of the, what we're doing, event, these reenactment groups, is educate. I mean, that, we had a, that there was a day when there were no Germans, and people were coming up and saying, why haven't, what are the Germans there? You know, what's going wrong? They're supposed to be. Yeah, I can't really say much more than that, but we are changing, we are listening, we're trying to get a balance. Um, with the gentleman that was here, um, I actually invited him to join the meeting. I said, look, you've got a strong feeling there, join the committee, and you can put that, and you can change things. Not interested. Um, it's very difficult getting volunteers and stuff, it is hugely difficult, certainly for committees, for going down there, organising the car parks, organising entries, just being there, and, you know, it's, you know, please respect that difficulty and that, you know, try, we're doing things which benefit Sandwich, you know, let us carry on. In, in particular, with VE Day coming up, I actually proposed in the celebration, noted work, David did, um, that maybe Sandwich Town Council might like to get strongly involved with possibly a working group, make it bigger, then Sandwich Town Council gets a serious say on the VE Day celebration, because we're rather sticking to the Norman D invasion celebrations. And, and I do get what you're saying, maybe that is a way around, that there's far more influence and, you know, you can push me to one side, push the others to one side, and say, this is how we want our VE Days to work, great, I, I, I will support that one hundred percent. But as it's, as I'm just looking for volunteers, attendees, reenactors, if I, if I'm not inclusive, I listen. Thank you. Thank you very much for that, councillor Malik. So coming back, um, coming back to the proposal that's on the table, we need to vote, first of all, on the proposal that's been put forward to split the money, so sixty five percent of it will be allocated tonight, and thirty five percent will be allocated in a later date.
Yes, and so, so that, that is my proposal, and I'd just like to respond to the list of events that were listed. If we were to pay all of those, we would be outside our budget by double. Um, we are trustees of this fund, and that's how we should be behaving in this room. Uh, I support all of the events here that wants to seek money, but I, as a trustee, am wanting to manage this fund correctly. If others don't, that is their call, and I will be voted down on this, and I'm looking at it objectively, I have not a vested interest directly in any of these events, so I'm trying to look into it objectively against a budget of ten thousand pounds.
So briefly, that's the proposal. We need to do that first, and then we need to, and then look at how we're going to allocate the, it will be six thousand five hundred basically, so, um, very briefly.
This ten thousand figure was arrived at before we knew what the insurance fee was.
Yes, and that's my point about holding back some money to immediately avoid this part of that process, we should take stock of how the fund is doing to reassure ourselves that the remaining amount of money can be paid in terms of, if you look at the criteria of the fund, the first line is about the facts, it's about only giving grants within the budget that allows it to be afforded.
I mean, that suggests to me that, in fact, there's not less than ten thousand pounds available, given the increase in the grant. I mean, the fundamental point is that if we spend capital, the, also there's income, because of course capital generates income, and where credit is in future events, in five years' time, ten years' time. And if we delay, have sixty five percent now and the remainder later, there's a possibility, when it comes to later, we realise we've got even less money than we think we have now.
That's right. Well, to just to answer yourself, councillor Crustilla, um, in these meetings, anybody can put proposal forward, for instance, I'm not suggesting this, but a proposal could be put forward to say, considering what's happening with the insurance, that we don't allocate any grant funding at all. That could be put forward theoretically, um, uh, the floor's open. I'm, I'm not to suggest or sway you in any way, you, but that was only a theoretical thing that I said, so it's up to.
My proposal is a middle ground, I'm trying to find a middle ground to get it subjective. We have no contingency for these buildings that we have a sponsor for. Who knows what might happen this coming financial year? So this is still with risk attached to it. There are a lot of people here with vested interests for events, and that's fine for them, but in this room, we are trustees of this fund, so that's what we need to start from as a perspective.
Councillor Wiles, should you second me?
Yeah, I'd say that, just to comment on, what we're trying to do is future proof, future events.
Yes.
And they were not trying to nullify that.
Yeah.
You're saying the future proof is in events, if, if this happens, you won't future proof the event, the event will close and they end up, Sandwich will end up a ghost town in the summer months, a guarantee.
Councillor Tomlinson?
I really want to ask councillor Murray, what solution does it present then? Because there is no solution in this, because there is a, no, please, let me finish.
Where's the extra money?
There's a limited fund available, regardless of whether we reduce that fund. Personally, I don't think we should, I think we should stick with the ten percent, because the purpose of this Tolbridge Fund is to provide for the benefit of Sandwich and people of Sandwich, and I think, but we have to look at a solution of how we're going to distribute that money fairly and realistically, because we're not living, we're living in reality, and we know that expenses for everybody are going up, cost of living has gone up, so there are going to be users, aren't there? We, that's the reality of it. It's not somebody bringing an uncomfortable truth to you, it is the truth. So we have to look at what the solution is.
Very, 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 very.
Address it to you.
Are we not listening to everyone? A few weeks down the discussing the Madics Fund, and this might be because the Sandwich Tolbridge Fund no longer supports the events, it's focused on, very, very focused, the Madics Fund is a more broad thing, which is able to support, are far more, be far more generous about supporting Sandwich in general. But I, I don't want to prejudge indeed.
So the Madics Fund.
The decision on the floor at the moment is Sandwich Tolbridge Fund, and that is a separate agenda, I'm sorry. So it's been proposed and seconded, although it's in favour of the proposal that's put forward by councillor Tukka, that did show, uh, the, the, the.
So three events.
Three events, and nine more. So that has been passed, oh, sorry, one extension.
Two extensions.
No, the vote recorded two extensions. Who was the other extension?
Councillor Wiles.
My.
And three more, yes. So one extension to councillor Ripley, three against, and councillor Murray wishes his approval.
Vote recorded, please.
And councillor Carter, councillor Malik, and councillor Murray.
Can I ask, Mr Mayor, what was your vote?
It was actually four, because I, although I'm, I support all the events, as you know, I've been on the festival and Sandwich Lights and all that sort of thing, is, I'm just worried that if we don't have some money left behind and there's some emergency, then I think we, we could find ourselves in great difficulty.
Obviously, my comment, the reason why I voted again, I was happy with fifty fifty, I was almost happy with five thousand or five hundred pounds, because I know there's some application, they don't need the money until September.
Yeah, thank you for that, thank you very much for that. So, um, now we need to move forward as to the allocation of that six thousand five hundred pounds, so, um, we need somebody to propose that, that is not basically on any of these committees, or has any profumery interest towards any of these committees. So, um, but. At some point, would you like me to leave as I'm involved? Um, I think that's, Mr Speaker, so it's no vote.
It's, it's, I'm going to say, you've already declared that you're not going to vote, have you?
Yes.
Yeah, so obviously, any interests are for individual councillors to, you know.
If you can vote the rest of them, you can vote the whole thing, yeah. I mean, I mean, one word to go about this allocation is, um, to be, to try and assist with the process, is are there any of the applicants on this list that we would not grant them to? Because obviously, if we take them out of the frame, we can then decide the split on the rest of them, so councillor Moorehouse, your swing up, please. Right.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Good judgment.
Right point. I'll, I'll give you a reason, and I'm not sure that us giving a very small amount of money against a three hundred and fifty pound shortfall is going to work, it's not, it's only gone past feasibility stage, it also involves colossal field, deru, deru, easy for you to say.
Deru.
And I'm not sure this is in line with what we would want to agree as a councillor side, but there's lots of reasons, and I'm not sure how well they serve just Sandwich. There's no information in there.
Okay, no. Are there any, any others that we can remove that are not, that we would not give money to at all?
At the, at the other end, I would agree a hundred pounds to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we will be voting on this officially, um, in the next, so. Um, okay, then. But then leaves, um, oh, there's the Whitemill ones, there's not.
So the money, so the, yes, the money for that is the, uh, is two thousand one hundred and sixty pounds for the full amount of the question.
What?
What, yes, what, for the Whitemill.
Yep.
Two thousand one hundred and sixty pounds.
Yes. I was going to say, we would, we would have to accept that, that ultimately, our problems. So, can I speak?
Okay.
Yeah, I personally spoke to the treasurer of Whitemill today, and hardly more information, and they said, they don't actually need the money until September. So my proposal would be, we won't still allow them, but we can delay to September, do we need to give us more? No, we can save on our fees out far later.
Does councillor Frank, uh, because you, you attended the meeting, so you've got a petron.
Speaking of a crane, that you've got to repair this last big beach, that's been taken a few, you know, to make it, repair it, well, not repair it, but actually make it, you've got a beach, you've got a spread on it, that's why they call it a worm, so I think it's even what they're saying, they can make it.
And I'm reassured when we do it, it's like a big, big fence.
Yes.
I suggest don't need it till September, so that is an option.
And I could say something, so in the, in the, in the council meeting, Mr Summer Hayes mentioned that they would like the, the, the working for the summer months, so they can put tourism into, tourism into the.
May I just explain, if we don't have a definite date, we're still, there are finishing touches on the stocks, and the worm, um, we need the crane, one, we need the crane, we wouldn't want to delay, if we can do it in July, we'd like to, we've sort of estimated September, October, but we don't know.
Okay, thank you for that update. Councillor Wiles?
Yeah, so I would, I would argue against the SMEA's application, because I don't feel that, A, it doesn't really relate to the town, B, I think the applicant, the status of that group to me is a bit fuzzy, about the relationship with the backup, with, with the wealth and individuals, I understand it, so I would argue against that one. Um, the Sandwich Salutes, I'd be happy to support, Simon knows my views on this, about the discussion we had earlier, I think any, any Vermak soldier from thirty three to forty five should be considered as persona non grata, I think, in Sandwich for that, um, the Vermak were not innocent, they committed many, many atrocities, they killed three million Soviet soldiers, two Vermak generals were panged up for near and by trials, even the Aparitifor were involved in deporting Jews to their deaths. So I think anyone in a Nazi, the Vermak strode Nazi uniform, because most people would not distinguish between the, should not be allowed, is a condition of that law, and if you had to have people, you'll assist them on turning up, they should be turned away. That's my opinion.
So, um, I'm not sure, you have Simon?
Yes, I was just going to say, I was very pleased to hear from councillor Malik, the individual who, um, uh, I met, but I didn't excuse him, uh, last year, has been asked to stay away, if I heard that.
That is correct, yes.
Um, the worry is at these events, and I know that this happened in North Norfolk, is that people turn up, um, and a large group turned up at a similar event, um, in North Norfolk last year, and caused such unpleasantness that, um, it reached the national newspapers, and they were dressed in Nazi uniforms and, um, and created a big deal of trouble, and that is the problem with this event, um, that it's difficult to control, as you say.
We need to keep up, yeah, and go to the. That's right, and I think we did say that this is going to be addressed outside of this council.
And I would say one thing, Mr Mayor, regarding the, the Sandwich Music Events Association, so yes, it is a commercial business, it is, and the bigger they are, they're paying three hundred pounds per day for the use of the square, and they're paying for the hire of the guild or fork, uh, for the, for the inside, for the main room, they're paying the full amount on, on both, to both days. The money that they're asking for is to pay for the bands outside to make it a free event for everybody. If those, if they, if they get, whatever gets, it's up to them, it's up to the, the committee to decide that, but if no, no money's given to them, then there's no bands outside, and it's just going to, it's going to be unused space, and I know for a fact that if, that, if the, the money, any money is given to them, they will pull the plug on the outside, and then they will not pay for the band to come to the use of the square.
I'd just like to, um, as a councillor and not as, as a chair of the committee, try to be fair about this, it looks like we've got, um, four mainland tenders, and then the keepers, and I was just thinking, to be fair, we can give each of those one point five, and then also these, with them theirs as well, so that would be six thousand one hundred pounds. But that is just a proposal that I'm putting forward, I don't know if anybody wants to um, settle that, or if anybody else has got another way of dividing it up, you can, but um, we do need to try and close this meeting off in about the next sort of ten, ten minutes or so. Councillor Wiles?
Yeah, I'd be going along with that, I think all of these organisations, they bid for a certain amount of money, they've all accepted in their, in their bids that the grant situation is difficult, but they're not expecting to get the full amount they're bidding for, so if we can give them something, then that's better than nothing. And it helps, you know, they've got other sources of funding, give the Whitemills some money to book a crane, and then pop that up, so I don't know if anybody thinks that's fair, we'd like to settle that, but it's okay with that, it's fair with the services, so I'm not prejudiced against anyone.
Not at all, not at all, so.
So does that mean the, sorry, Chris, uh, Chris, so the Sandwich Music Events Association wants one thousand pounds, so how much are you going to give them, the full amount? You just say give one five five five. You just say give 1,550 to everybody?
Somebody said that that was being taken out because of the...
So you're not giving money?
No. So maybe 1.5 for the poke nail festival, 1.5 for the digital music, only on the provision that their, their events are here in Sandwich. And 1.5 to the White Mill Rural Heritage Centre, which is our asset. And 1.5 to the Sandwich salute supporters. And then, obviously, it was mentioned about the beekeeping. And of course, that's an ecological thing that ties in with us calling a climate change issue and environmental issue.
So would you accept an amendment to actually increase each of those to 1.6? Because that will still hit 65% of the greeds, it wouldn't go above it, and the £100 for the beekeepers. So at least it's, it's using up the money with the greeds while...
I would accept that, and we'll just get this forward and get some food.
No, I was just going to get more generous and suggest that the, rather than 1.6 each, that extra money goes to poke nail, which they have to pay their dues. They have no, they have very few voluntary groups, and that will hurt if they don't get... The less they get, the more they're hurt.
I understand that, but if we start banging into the minority, I, I put my proposal forward, so it's across all of them. It's across all of them, we're trying to be fair and equal here. And if we, if anybody wants to, this is what the town clerk gave me, this is the, we could go into... Does anybody want to go into it, helps? Would anyone want to break down, profit and loss? Does anybody want to say, councillor, Mrs Carter, assist us? If people want to do that, I've put something forward, which just seems a fair and equal option. If somebody would like to second it. And so that's been proposed and seconded, and that would be 1.6 plus the beekeepers. All those in favour, for which organisation?
The white mill, or please vote around you, and the £100 for the bees.
Yeah.
And then, and then include white mill and the crane. So all those in favour, if you're not in favour, please show your cards.
Am I allowed to vote?
No, you're not.
Chris, they're going to get the number for the vote.
And that item has been passed.
I just say thank you very much, everyone, I'm sure that all will be very grateful. Now it's a book, don't say.
I also, the last, the last three items on the agenda, can we agree as per the Sandown Town Council agreement?
I would just say, put that forward if everybody's agreed with that. Items seven, eight and nine, we will take forward on block. Item seven, eight and nine, we will be taking on block. And so if everybody's in favour of taking those on block, please show. And for the same arrangement, as the Sandwich Toll Bridge, the Sandown Town Council, that's passed. And item number 10 is date of next STC and STBF trustee meeting, between 29th of April, 2020. And thank you very much for your perseverance and endurance this evening. Very grateful to you.
Sorry?
Six.
My son's school is going to be in Cambridge, he didn't like that. Because he's thinking he's a clean dancer.
Jill, all this into that box or what? Oh, yeah, so, so those ones going there.
Yeah, apple, it's just very trendy, isn't it?